Well, welcome back, everybody. This is Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the Chelmsford Senior Center for night two of the Spring Town Meeting here in beautiful North Chelmsford. It's a lovely evening and the town meeting reps are assembling. I saw one or two of them being sworn in late. Most of them were sworn in Monday night. And for those of you who weren't with us on Monday night, it was all about the money. Not only was the town's budget passed, but we also passed a $2.8 million appropriation for Neshoba Valley Technical High School. Now, I don't know what it is about Neshoba Tech, but it always seems to bring out the most aggressive questioning and the most scrutiny. I think I've finally put my finger on it. $2.8 million is about close to 3% of the town's budget. And it's money that we literally have no control over and that an outside entity, in this case, Neshoba Tech, comes to us and says, "This is what you have to pay. The state has certain requirements." In part, it's of our own doing because the town had asked Neshoba Tech to start establishing a rainy day fund, a so-called stabilization fund, and they've been doing that. And $200,000 more is in this budget. So, we are simply essentially paying for what we asked them to do. So, that was a pretty contentious issue. Also, getting a lot of scrutiny last Monday night was the school budget, which came in at $52.4 million. That's about 3% over last year. It is less than the schools wanted. You're certainly aware, probably, that there's been a lot of chaos and upheaval within the school department, having to do with its business practices. And, you know, changes right at the top. Superintendent Dr. Frank Tiano has announced his resignation. He will be replaced very soon. So, with all that in mind, Dr. Tiano presented his last budget for the coming year. It actually passed without too much complication. It was followed by the town's, the municipal side of the budget, $56.3 million, which is a zero-growth budget. It's level funding. The only increases really in there are a 2% cost of living increase for the town's employees. And so, that passed without much complication at all. So, what do we have to look forward to tonight? Well, for starters, Article 7. Well, the first thing is tonight, we're going to have a special town meeting, a one-article town meeting warrant, having to do with an increase in the sewer expenses for fiscal 2015. That's the one we're in right now and, in fact, the one that's only got about three months left. You might recall that the town, at the last year's town meeting, undertook the responsibility for the grinder pumps that a number of our citizens have in their yards as part of the sewer-ing project. Initially, they were left with the maintenance and repair and replacement for those. The town, through the town meeting, has undertaken that. And guess what? It's been more expensive to assess the cost of repairs, to do the repairs, and to handle the replacements than we thought. So, there's going to be an additional amount of money requested on that special town meeting warrant for this current fiscal year. And there'll also be an additional amount of money requested for fiscal 2016. And in addition to that, Article 13 will be to replace and upgrade a sewer pumping station on Progress Avenue to the tune of $825,000. Folks, this sewer business is expensive. It might be dirty, it might be grimy, but it is very expensive. And I think that that's going to be the bulk of the discussion tonight. It will be all about the sewer-ing and the grinder pumps. We have only 22 articles on this town meeting warrant, really only 21, because one of them having to do with collective bargaining agreements, Article 10, is being withdrawn because we're not there yet. We're not ready to reach an agreement with some of our town unions. We might hear Paul Cohen tell us more about the state budget that was just passed, at least through the legislature, the House, on Beacon Hill. That might give us an indication of how much money we're going to be getting in fiscal 2016, which will be a big help. One of the things that happened on Monday night was that we, in a sense, passed a budget that required a half a million dollars of our stabilization fund, our rainy day fund, in order to put it in balance. A million dollars of that budget went to something called OPEB, O-P-E-B. That's other pension employment benefits, if I've got that right. That's the obligation that the town has to fund its retirement plan for its employees, retired employees. There was some attempt on the part of Selectmen to amend that so that we didn't have to dip into the rainy day fund and less money would go to OPEB, but that was overruled. A full million dollars is going to help pay that off. We're dipping into the stabilization fund for a half million dollars. Town manager Paul Cohen assures us that by the end of this fiscal year, that is on June 30th, we'll have enough free cash to repay that rainy day fund and then some. So, that might be a little bit of an issue tonight. The other big ticket item will be Article 12, which is the capital budget. These are the projects that we pay out of pocket to have things repaired. New computer systems, new trucks, new roofs on buildings. That will total $3.3 million. That will include, among other things, a fitness room for here at the senior center so that our seniors can come in and exercise. The school committee is asking for $170,000 for security cameras and keyless entry, and there'll be about a half a million dollars for roadway repairs. All of these things add up to about $3.3 million. One of the things that is usually here before us at town meeting during the spring session is a number of zoning bylaws and such. There's none of that. It's actually a fairly streamlined town meeting warrant. We will hear from the Conservation Planning Committee, the Conservation, I mean, excuse me, the Conservation Preservation Committee, which has no projects on the docket. They are simply going to be asking town meeting reps to help them apportion the money into different pots for future spending. All said and done, if the sewer debate is fairly streamlined, and, you know, I think it could go either way, we might be done tonight. If the sewer discussion takes a long time, and there's every possibility that that might be the case, it's been a very contentious flashpoint kind of issue at meetings past. If that takes a long time, then we're probably going to be pushing to a third night for town meeting. That would be next Monday night. So, as always, it's interesting. We had a few technical problems last time involving computers and the automatic electronic voting. We think those are resolved this time. We hope that you've been enjoying a new facility that we've got, which is to allow you to see the various slides that are presented in a little bit better detail. You can actually see those online as well. If you go to chelmsfordtv.org right now, you could see those. And of course, you'll see them on the screen. And thanks to the hard work of our engineer, Tom Peterson, we have a new picture-in-picture function that allows you to see the speaker but see the screen at the same time. And here in the senior center, too, we have two giant screens showing this to all of our town meeting reps. So, they'll have no excuse for not seeing what's being put before them. It stands to be a very interesting evening. We hope you'll stay with us for it. Thanks for joining us. We'll be back soon.
Good evening. Good evening. Please join me in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to call to order a special town meeting for the purpose of addressing one warrant article. I have looked at the warrant and the return of service, and I am declaring that this has been properly noticed under the laws. I'd like you all to check your voting devices so that I can determine whether or not there's a quorum. While you're voting, I'd like to announce that the Wi-Fi in the hall has been upgraded, so hopefully, no one will have any problems logging on. Again, you go to TOC Guest as the log-on and Chelmsford Alliance. For the viewers at home, if they type in on their smart device slides.chelmsfordtv.org, you can see what we see on our screens on your smart device. Okay, I declare that we have a quorum. As a result of my ownership of a grinder pump, and because this deals with grinder pumps, I will be recusing myself. I will entertain a motion to appoint Michael McCall as the temporary moderator. Second?
Second.
Okay. I don't know if we've got it on the machine or not. Otherwise, we'll just do it by hands. We do. Please vote. Thank you. Mr. McCall has been duly voted. At this time, Thad Sewell will swear him in as a temporary moderator, and I will be recusing myself.
Good evening, and thank you all. At this time, I have a motion from Paul Cohen, the town manager, to amend the fiscal year 2015 sewer enterprise budget voted under Article 6 of the Spring Annual Town Meeting held on April 28, 2014 by transferring $150,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund free cash to the expense line item. This time, I'll hear from Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. This article is the sole article on the special town meeting. It's to address the current fiscal year sewer enterprise budget, which, again, is a self-contained operating entity where the monies from the collective for sewer support the sewer operations. When we complete this article, we'll resume with the Article 6 of the, 7 of this annual town meeting, which actually happens to be the sewer enterprise budget. So, it actually lines up quite well. This article, as I mentioned, is to get a supplemental transfer of $150,000 from the Sewer Enterprises Fund free cash reserves to pay for additional costs for this current year. And at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Gary Persicetti, our Public Works Director, and Mike Bosnastis, our Sewer Division's supervisor, to explain to you the work that's been done to date and the reason for the request for the additional $150,000.
Good evening, everybody. This report is basically bringing everybody up to date on where we stand with the residential grinder pump project. And inspections are mostly completed. There's still some that need to be completed. They had restricted access or no access, and they'll be attempted to be done again. But we're over 92% completed on the inspections. And we found out that most of the units are in fair condition, around 69% of them. 22% were in very good condition, mostly because of recent repairs, and about 9% were in poor condition. Per my recommendation with Weston and Sampson, who was contracted to do the repairs, minor repairs, about approximately 62 of them, were done during the inspection process with no additional labor costs involved. There were fairly simple repairs to do, and they had taken care of that. And there was only about $4,600 in parts used for that project. To date, there's been over 200 repairs done, approximately 23 with F.R. Mahoney before Weston and Sampson took over the contract. About 65 of the repairs were done during the inspections, because of the inspections. And so, there was no additional labor charges for travel, and, you know, people were in town and on-site. We had a good reduction in the after-hours service call requests. So, the project has produced some results already. One of the questions that was asked was to evaluate how many residents had remote sentries, which is the remote alarm monitoring systems installed. The town had issued over 150 of them. We found that less than half of them were installed, and many were not located in living spaces. So, some obviously are not effective. The repair costs are higher than expected, primarily due to the condition that we found of units that are, some of them older than 20 years old, and the lack of basic maintenance. The costs that follow are basically to bring the units to what we call, or I call, a common or town standard. And the definition of the town standard is how the units were delivered. So, all the functions, all the functionality of the grinder pumps when they were issued is what we call the town standard. All right, so for our first-year expenses, we've spent approximately $292,000 as of mid-February. And the bulk of that, almost $136,000, was the bulk of the inspections have been paid for. There were $157,000 roughly in repairs to date done. To finish off the year, and the reason we're asking for another $150,000 is to complete and the balance of the inspections, which is a minor amount, and the estimate for projected repairs, about four and a half months' worth, because we're behind about a month and a half on billings. So, we haven't, we don't have current invoices. So, about $90,000 to finish off the year for repairs. And there's a term that we call critical repairs, and I'll just briefly say what those are. A critical repair has been deemed an imminent failure. So, I'll refer to that every once in a while, but it basically means that the unit is going to fail in the near short term, and we estimate it within three months. Non-critical repair is a unit that needs repairs but may last up to a year before it needs service. So, we have those two terms that are dealing with the following budget items. So, $42,000 of the balance of this year is to cover the critical repairs. Critical repairs are basically items, again, that are imminent failure and need to be done immediately, or they will fail unpredictably. And, you know, history has found out that if you do the repairs in a scheduled manner, and it eliminates downtime, it eliminates backups in people's homes. So, these repairs are scheduled to be done before the end of the year. Okay, these numbers here, it doesn't say on it, but it's for year two. We're estimating that year two regular repairs will come in at about $210,000. And $94,000, almost $95,000, will be the balance of the critical repairs. And that includes replacing control panels that have serious moisture damage, and about $60,000 to replace the old-style control panels, which have lost functionality as far as the alarms and battery backup goes. $136,000 for year two will cover non-critical repairs, and that's to bring the units back up to as-installed condition. So, that means any indicator lights, any push buttons, anything that needs to be repaired to bring the units back up to full functionality. It also includes a small amount to replace some deteriorated level controls and about $130,000 to replace another group of old-style control panels that, again, cannot be repaired. No parts are available. They're the original ones that were installed. And most of them are missing the backup alarm features and generator switch functionality. Move on to year three. About $236,000 in regular repairs. And we get into year three, the remote alarm sentry upgrades. They call it an upgrade because, basically, we're installing remote sentry panels that provide battery backup to alarm conditions and remote monitoring so that the alarm can be heard inside the home. So, phase one of this will involve about 277 units. And then, there's about $54,000 in upgrading the balance of the old-style panels. Year four of the plan is going to run about $240,000 in regular repairs, the balance of 30% of the remote sentry upgrades. There's also some non-standard units that are out there that we've had issues with getting parts in a timely manner, and it's recommended that those units be standardized to what we carry in stock, basically. There are also some issues with some power cables that need to be addressed out there, and that's a minor figure. But year four would come in at about $460,000. So, the project, over the first four years, would total about $1.8 million. And that would bring everything up to full operating condition, including repairs and providing that functionality of the remote alarm and battery backup that was originally issued with the units to all the units. It does not include any potential liability or insurance claims, or any homeowner costs that would be involved, or any other unforeseen repairs or administrative costs. There's some considerations that we've run into along the way. After looking at this in the remote sentry, which is a very desired feature, again, it was a standard item that was included. There is another option that would provide better monitoring for the town, if the town was to continue with this. And that's a guardian system that the town would monitor itself. And that would provide us with information of how the pump units are doing out there and, basically, let us know what condition they're in and when they need attention. Some of them before failure, some of them right when they fail. So, we're aware of what's going on. We're finding that there's a lot of gray areas that, based on the language of the bylaw, are undefined, and we're having a little bit of a struggle trying to determine exactly where that line is of responsibility between the homeowner and the town. Since there was no recovery of discounts that was given by, you know, for betterments or installations, the question becomes, should, where does the town liability lie? Should it go forward only? And since nothing was recovered for, of the $2.4 million that was issued in betterment discounts and installations, that's something that needs to be considered and decided. Recommendation is, I would like to work with the Grinder Study Committee, again, and Town Council to possibly looking to amending the town bylaw to better define the limits of town liability and responsibility, along with the homeowner's responsibility, to eliminate these gray areas. One recommendation that we have is that we have a clearly-defined owner responsibility sheet that is signed so that each owner knows what they're responsible for. And that, obviously, would help in reducing any liability issues because, once they're signed, then the owner is aware. We're finding out that a lot of people say, "I'm not aware of this. I didn't read the paperwork. I didn't, you know, didn't look at the documentation." So, this, again, would eliminate one of the gray areas. And there's a couple of other issues that should be looked at as to what degree do we repair non-standard custom installations. Originally, this program was to look at the prefabricated grinder units. We're finding out that there's a lot of custom units that were installed out there and whose repair costs run significantly higher. And, again, that's another gray area. How much of that does the town cover? Does it cover the full amount or a partial amount? Basically, we're in good condition. I think there's been a positive response as to how the town and Weston and Sampson has handled the repairs. They've been very punctual, in some cases, immediate response. I don't think anybody has been serviced. You know, if it's a late-night call, they've gone out. Sometimes, they'll come out in the morning first thing. So, the response time has been very good, and the DPW and the Sewer Department has been very happy with the way that they've been handling the whole project, providing us with information and very good service. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, we'll open up the floor to question and answer. I'd just remind you, when you come forward to the microphone...
I'd just remind you, when you come forward to the microphone, if you're a town meeting rep, please state your name and your precinct. If you're a resident, please give your name and your address.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. So many of us here have received an email from, I'm not sure if it's the Alliance Group or the committee, and it is said that they actually disagree with this. It would have been nice to have everybody on the same page, but I would like an explanation from the presenter and whoever's sending out the emails to explain the difference, and why there's a difference, and why it didn't come out before this week.
What I'd like to do right now is have question and answer the proponent, and when we start debate, I'll give Mr. Foley the opportunity to come up and address his slide under the debate portion, and you could discuss your question and answer with Mr. Foley.
I don't want to discuss it. I need to understand it.
Well, let's, first, what we have, the proponents here have some questions and answer with them, and then we'll move on to Mr. Foley.
My name is David Foley, Town Meeting Rep, Precinct 5, 6 Armand Drive. And I'll get the ball rolling with a few questions.
Very good.
Moderator, Mr. Moderator to the presenter. The grinder pump bylaw passed last spring holds homeowners responsible for repairs due to abuse of the pump. And can you explain, what is the cost recovery mechanism that has been implemented in the current program for that?
Sure. In consultation with the town accountant and town manager, basically, any recovery of abuse or misuse-related charges go onto the sewer bill of the user. And a letter goes out when we, prior to issuing the sewer bill, so he is aware of, they're aware that they'll be charged for some non-covered expenses.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator to the presenter. Of the approximately 102 service calls that are included in your presentation tonight, how many of these are in the process of having their costs recovered for abuse of the pumps?
I don't have an exact number. Basically, we're about a month and a half behind on invoicing. Each repair is looked at individually and investigated if there is any type of back charge that's going to happen. Obviously, the most obviously, obvious ones are grease. Most of those are paid directly by the homeowner. There are instances that involve other issues, such as the units being under warranty and not calling the right service company to come in and take care of it, and a few other issues that have come up. It's a small amount. It's not a significant amount.
So you don't think that would significantly affect the figures that you have presented?
No.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Moderator to the presenter. The estimated cost of the inspection program that was provided by the sewer superintendent to the grinder pump committee was $84,000. But the actual costs that are included in your report tonight are in excess of $140,000. So can you provide an explanation for the $56,000 difference in those two figures?
Sure. Initially, for the presentation to the grinder committee, a basic inspection was looked at, and I had asked F. Armahoney to provide a cost of what they would charge to come out and inspect the units. After the bylaw was passed and the grinder committee's recommendations, the scope had changed significantly, including the fact that the town needed to know what was out there and needed much more technical information. And so the basic inspection became one for the town, not for the homeowner. And there was probably about 110 items that are on an inspection sheet, most of them technical, about the condition and serial numbers and that type of thing. So in getting a quotation for the town meeting last fall, I sought additional quotes, and they came in at roughly, I believe, last fall, I put in for $140,000 for the inspections, which is pretty much where they came in.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator to the presenter. How many bidders were there on the grinder pump contract?
Two actual bidders. There were half a dozen people that took out contract documents, two submitted bids.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Oh, actually, I have two. I'm sorry. Was a credentialed electrician required to be present at the grinder pump inspections?
No, not at all the inspections.
Oh. And my last question. In your presentation tonight, you show 17 pump replacements to be completed before June 30th due to bearings.
Yes.
And my question is, how many, so these are what I call elective repairs, simply because the pump hasn't yet failed. And so my question is, do you know how many pumps preceding those would have been replaced before failure, or without a call from the homeowner?
To date?
Yeah. In other words, aside from the 17 that you've mentioned that are to be done in the future, how many have already been done?
We just had one a few days ago.
Yeah, I don't mean up actually to today, because your report only covers to February 17th or so. What I meant was, from the beginning of the program, July 1st, or August, whenever the program started in the last year, up through February 17th, how many elective pump repairs or repairs that would have been done without a failure call, you know, by the homeowner?
I don't have an exact number on that, but I can tell you my instructions to Weston and Sampson were, if it was deemed imminent failure, and the unit was in critical condition, that they had the authorization to replace the unit with either a new unit or a rebuilt unit. So there were quite a few that were found to be in serious condition that were replaced. It's much more cost-effective to do it on a scheduled basis rather than an emergency call basis.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I know Ms. Calafakis was in line.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct 2. Through you, moderator to the presenter. Do you have an estimate as to how much money in invoices you have yet to do? Do you have a dollar figure on that?
The projection was what we had on the first, the balance to complete the first year. I'm not sure exactly what figure you're looking for.
You said you had invoicing that you had yet to do. That's what I'm asking you about.
We had yet to be invoiced.
Okay.
So...
Now, the other question that I have is, if someone has a custom grinder pump, why did they do that in the first place? And what is the difference between that custom one and the one that you want to replace it with? Is it going to be, is that considered an equal swap, or is that going to cause a problem?
There have been some problems. Say, I'll give you an example of a custom installation, is if somebody took a tank, whether it's a septic tank or whatever, and decided to use that because it's a much larger capacity, and put some pumps into it. It's not a prefabricated unit that you buy. It's a custom unit that, somebody selects a pump, somebody builds or buys a control panel, and puts the units together, and somehow installs it. So that's a custom, that could be considered one of the custom installations.
Okay. And further on that, if the homeowner chose to do that, if I remember correctly in the last year's article, we had agreed to replace an existing unit that was comparable to, it was going to be compatible to what our standard was.
Right.
So if they've opted to do something else, then aren't they responsible to opt to change it over? Shouldn't that be their responsibility? I mean, they did it in the first place.
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the gray areas.
You're talking a lot of money.
Yeah. It's one of the gray areas that's undefined. The town does have liability, because if it's aware of a situation, it has to repair the pump. That's part of the bylaw. The town also has to fall under federal and state regulations when it comes to this, because the bylaw did make it part of the sewer system. So we're responsible to take action, take action immediately to repair a problem, to minimize downtime, and prevent any backups into the home and such.
Okay. And on these custom units, do we have the parts, or how long is it going to take us to get the parts? Is it more expensive to repair?
It's, we've identified quite a few of them.
Okay.
And, again, it's like somebody making their own pump station.
Okay.
So the town, you know, it's not feasible to stock 10 different manufacturers' parts.
Right.
It's just, it's not cost-effective. So when the pump fails, it would be scheduled to be replaced with a standard unit, whatever we decide that standard unit is, whether it's another E1 unit or something else appropriate.
Okay. So what happens if the homeowner decides they don't want your unit? They don't want your standardized unit? Then what?
Yeah, the units are privately owned. The homeowner can do basically what he wants.
Okay. So if there's a service call, they have their own service call, they have their own maintenance agreements and whatever.
They have the option to do that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Bill Wagner, Precinct 8. We were missing a lot of information when this got voted into the bylaws, specifically information on the age of pumps, the aging effects. Now that you've mostly completed the inspections, do we have any detailed records of the age of pumps that have to be replaced? Which ones have made their entire lifetime? Which ones have been replaced a year into their life? And which ones are still under warranty? Because I suspect that, you know, standard pumps have some sort of warranty on them.
Yeah, that's very hard to put a figure on, basically because pumps have been repaired and replaced over the last 20 years. So we do have, we do find original installation pumps out there that are 20 years old. We also find that there are pumps that were first installed 20 years ago that have been replaced once or twice. So unfortunately, we don't have records, primarily from F. Armahoney, who was handling the service calls. I think we only go back four years, with records, three or four years.
But with the inspections, in theory, the inspector gets to look at the serial number of the pump, which should determine the age of the pump that's currently there. So regardless of how many times it's been replaced previously, the pumps that have currently been inspected, do we have detailed records on how old the pumps are, which ones are being replaced, whether they're the really old ones, whether they're middle-aged ones, or whether they're brand-new pumps that have failed for some reason?
Yeah. I mean, we're not replacing pumps that don't need to be replaced.
Obviously.
Yeah.
But there are, I'm sure, middle-aged to new pumps that are failing. Do we have that sort of detailed record?
I'm sure it could be put together, but it's going to be all over the place, because there's too many variables involved. You could have a pump, an old pump that goes out in a few years, based on usage or other conditions, and one that lasts 15 years. So it's hard to get an exact balance of what's out there. We haven't done it. I think it would take substantial energy to put something like that together again. I mean, we can identify the age of the pumps. We have most of the serial numbers.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't know if it's a rebuilt pump, an exchange pump, or...
Right. So, just to clarify, you have the serial numbers, which gives you the age of the pump?
I think most of them.
Can we have a report of the pumps that are currently in place, regardless of whether it's been rebuilt or replaced since then? The pumps that are currently in place, what the age of the pumps that are in place right now are?
I'm sure we could get something that would be fairly accurate.
Mr. Thoron?
Glenn Thoron, Precinct 5. Just trying to get a baseline here. The activities for which you were asked to perform these services over the past year, was there a budget, or was it just whatever it cost? I mean, was there a particular number that we were aiming for?
I believe Weston and Sampson, through the town manager, was asked to provide an estimate of what it was going to cost for repairs, and that was provided in their bid. The fixed figure was the inspection figure. The repair figure was based on what their prevailing wage rates were, and which items were prevailing wage and which weren't. So, again, it's a variable contract, because you don't know how many failures you're going to be dealing with, and you don't know the condition of the units before such a bid is put in place. So we didn't really have a budget for how much this was going to cost this year. You know, and we're here asking for more money based on the fact that it costs something, but we didn't have a budget.
Is there a budget?
Yeah. I mean, on their price proposal, the fixed cost is, you know, obviously, the inspections and evaluations at $140,600. That's a fixed figure. There's a part-time flat management fee that's included in there for year one, two, and three.
What would be the bottom, what would be the bottom line of this current year's budget?
Pardon me?
Was there a bottom line for how much we expected to spend this year?
Yes. I think the first year's projected costs were going to be about $260,000.
$260,000.
And then year two and year three, for the standard repairs on prefabricated units, was estimated at about $153,000 and then $176,000.
Okay. So it sounds like we're making some decisions on pump replacements from your previous report based on subjective analysis of the pumps. Noisy bearings, for example. What is the data on how loud a bearing is versus how long it's going to last?
I think that's subjective, but, you know, based on experience, if a bearing is making loud noise and is vibrating, you know, it's not going to last very long. If it's making a slight noise, you know, you have a fair amount of time before, you know, possibly months.
So it's really, we have no data on that?
There's no way to firmly, because you don't know how much the pump is being used and what's being put in there, and there's a lot of factors that play into it.
So one last question. It sounded like, from your report, you were standardizing on an E1 pump. Now, I know there are other grinder pumps out there. I mean, is the E1 pump, say, compared with a centrifugal grinder pump, the most reliable pump out there? Would you expect an E1 to last longer than a centrifugal grinder pump? If you wanted to standardize on a pump, I mean, it's one type or the other type?
Yeah. I mean, it's a balance, and it's a decision that has to be looked at, what's cost-effective. Right now, we have E1s out there. And obviously, to repair, we have stock on those units and parts, and it's a lot easier to repair those units.
But you talked about replacing pumps. I was trying to focus on that.
Yeah. I mean, there is a conversion cost to it, so there is an additional cost in the conversion. Right now, we haven't made that decision to switch over to another type of pump. I think that would have to be looked into, and some background and history on the units to figure out which means a reliable...
Well, then, a simple last question.
Yep.
Are there more reliable pumps than the E1 pump?
I think it's variable, and, you know, with the E1 pump, it's a plug-and-play. You take it out, you put the other one back in. All the components are in one unit. With the other pumps, you have separate components that can fail. So, you know, it's not apples and apples. Yes, there are more heavy-duty pumps that can be in there. They cost more money. I've looked at one recently, and it runs around 30% more. So is that an option? It's an option we're looking at. I mean, we're always open to seeing what's out there and what will better serve the town and the residents. Thank you.
Mr. Newcomb?
Tom Newcomb, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter. You've given us the four-year update, an update and a four-year plan, but my understanding is that you're not looking for any type of approval for any expenditure in that plan. You're simply looking for $150,000 in additional funding for last year. Is that, is that correct?
For the current year, to finish off the current year.
Okay. And you, for the last speaker, you gave a figure of, I think you said $183,000 is what was...
Yeah, that was, you know, an estimate that what may be the repair costs for the year. Again, it's an unknown factor, because none, you know, we didn't know the condition of the units, so it was kind of like a guess where we are.
Okay. I mean, and not to sound argumentative, because this is not debate, but I think that there were a lot of, a lot of uncertainty and nebulousness when this was approved last year, as to what the cost... year as to what the, the exact cost was going to be. So, is it safe to say that you're coming back looking for additional funding because this was undefunded when it was originally proposed because we had no clue as to really what the spend cost was?
Yeah, I, I mean, you can project, you can say, you know, based on a small sampling, you can, you can pretty much draw a conclusion. And obviously, until you look at all the units, you don't know what the actual cost is going to come close to. Again, it's not a fixed figure because there's too many variables in there on usage and, you know...
Okay, so we, so even this could not, this is a possibility, this may not even be enough to get us through the year. Is that correct?
I, I don't think it would, it would, the hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Yeah, the hundred and fifty is coming out of the reserve fund for the, for the sewer enterprise fund.
Right.
Right.
But it's still, it still affects the ratepayers.
Uh, no, it would not affect the rate, ratepayers at all since it's coming out of the enterprise reserve fund. So, we're not looking for additional rate increases for this, this hundred and fifty thousand.
All right, thank you. Dave Dabinsky, Precinct Two. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. Having a background in contract negotiations, I'm just wondering why entering into a service agreement, you or whoever negotiated the contract for the service agreement did not insist upon a capitated contract? We wouldn't be here if it was a capitated contract.
I don't know if the town attorney wants to answer that, or...
Are you talking, are you talking about a fixed price that when they get to it, that's it?
Yes, where a service provider puts in a bid, he has all the specifications from the town for what is predicted. They go back, they run the numbers, they predict what, what their liability may be, and then in turn, they come back. I'm on the Board of Trustees at Williamsburg. We do it with all of our service providers. When it snows crazy, they get killed. When it's a beautiful winter, we get killed. But that's the benefit of a capitated contract. You have a fixed liability, and that's the end of it, and we wouldn't be debating this extra expenditure.
First of all, town contracts are a little bit different, and secondly, in this case, there's no way that that could be done when you're asking for them to look at all these grinder pumps that they have never seen before, okay? And do reports on those to come up with what is the status of the pumps, okay? And they're looking at that from a point of view of basically a standard of care to the pump and the unit.
I hear what you're saying, and I don't want to be argumentative, but I think...
Well, I want to caution you that it does sound a bit to me like debate because you had a question whether or not they considered putting in a capped contract, and I think they tried to answer some of that, and we could save some of this for debate.
Let me ask you a follow-up question, please.
Sure.
Are any of the town contracts, for whatever they may be, are any of them capitated contracts?
Fixed price, yeah.
No, and the reason is, is if, if no one knew the condition of the, of the pumps, you would have paid a huge premium for that uncertainty. So, to sit here and do a fixed-price contract when neither the town nor the vendor would know the condition of the pumps, the, the bid price we would have gotten in would have been probably greater than the extra money we're talking about here because they're going to hedge their uncertainty.
We don't even, we don't know that. We don't know.
Well, I think, I think one could venture...
When we do shade with a snow contractor, we don't know what, how, what winter's going to look like.
All right.
It's the same thing.
We'll save for debate. Any other questions?
Bob Myers, Precinct Six. I had a question for the presenter. Does this project encompass all of the grinder pumps in town, or only the ones where people reported problems?
No, this encompasses, to date, for single and duplex-installed units. There's five-hundred-and-thirty-seven units out there. There's still another handful, another twenty units or so that have not been installed to date. So, this covers the five-hundred-and-thirty-seven units that are identified as single-family or two-family units.
Is the town on the hook for anything in excess of a duplex, like maybe a project or apartment complex or condo complex?
I think based on the, on the byline, no. Only covers single and two-family homes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This time, I'd ask the finance committee if they have a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted unanimously for this particular article.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
I believe the Board of Selectmen would actually like to wait until we hear the debate, given the recent developments and the potential opposition from the Sewer Fairness Alliance. So, I think we'd like to wait and see, see some of that opposing views before giving our position.
At this point, then, I will open up the floor for discussion. Ms. Logan.
Beth Logan again. So, I would like both sides of what is going on and why we have a conflict in town over this with the two groups that are supposed to be working together. I'll take his first, and then whomever would like to represent the other side.
Thank you.
To recap and to get to where we are is basically, as you know, we were here approximately seven months, months ago, and a lot of figures were thrown out, a lot of different numbers were used. There was assumptions made in certain areas of what cost thought would be. And again, I mean, one of the things that I think clearly came out that night was simply that this is no different than almost anything you do. You need history, number one, and you need some cost in front of you in some numbers. Anything you do really takes you a good two to three years to come up with a, a pretty good fixed cost of what you believe you're going to be spending on an ongoing basis moving forward. With that said, you're looking at five-hundred-and-thirty-seven inspections of grinder pumps that have never been looked at before by the vendor. You're asking him to do a very extensive look into that, and all sorts of things were found. And based on that, we have, as I said before, standard of care that needs to be exercised to this, to the people and to the grinder pumps so that we don't have imminent failures. And, and based on that, that's what I believe has created the number that you're looking at in front of you tonight. And I believe that moving forward, the number will probably be around that for a little bit, and then I believe once you have a handle on it, this number is going to drop, and it's going to drop quite a bit to a point where everything is going to be known, everything is going to be either serviced or serviceable, and at that point, I think you're going to find your number to drop drastically and be a lot more reasonable in the future.
Sure.
My name is George Modica. I'm a resident at One Petters Place, and, Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to make a comment. I purchased my residence about fifteen years ago, and I would just like to make the comment that at the time, I had no idea what a grinder pump was, and even in my real estate listing that I still have a copy of, there was no mention of grinder pumps. And in fact, I, before this meeting, I dug up my house inspection, and there's not one mention of grinder pump anywhere in there. So, I just want to make sure that that's taken into consideration and deliberations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Donahue, Precinct Nine. I just have a question about one of your slides, the one that says residential grinder update. The, one of the, it says eighteen thousand dollars, power cables that are loose or in poor condition, and it says responsibility not defined. And I guess this goes to the gray areas that you were speaking of before. My question is, is the committee who originally met going to go back and try to clarify our responsibilities and liabilities and things that are, you refer to as the gray areas? Are they going to convene and solve some of them, or give us more information about them?
If, if the committee is reconvened, I believe it's your desire. If it's your desire to do that, then yeah, we'll look at all that information. And like I said, we have a handle of what we're dealing with out there, the gray areas, and, you know, with the town attorney's assistance, we can define the liability limits that the town has, which could be pretty substantial if not addressed.
Yeah, when you look at the monies that you expect, well, this year will not be enough, and each year it's going to increase. I'm hoping that maybe a committee or whomever will define the responsibilities that are not defined.
Hi, my name is Liz Reinwich, Three Azalea Court, Chelmsford.
Could, could you please speak up?
Liz Reinwich, Three Azalea Court in Chelmsford. And I'm, I'm on the SFA, well, I've been involved with this, and, you know, I can appreciate everyone being here, you know, spending all this time on the pumps, and, you know, it is a pain. And, I mean, we're all, you know, one of the things we really expect from our government is basic water and sewer. And, you know, before the SFA, before the town took over this maintenance, I want to remind everyone that some people, you know, the way it was before, if you didn't have, if you were someone who hit hard times and didn't have a credit card, Mahoney would not give you maintenance. You would not have water and sewer because these things only hold like forty gallons. So, by doing what we're doing, as painful as it is, it is really the right thing to do. But, but this is a real pain, and I'll, I'll tell you my grinder pump story. Because when I got my grinder pump, it was always kind of noisy, and I didn't, you know, I just never had the thing before, thought it was, that's the way it was. And if you looked at my water bills, sewer bills, I have always used the minimum. I grew up with a well, people across the street, well went dry. I mean, we always, in our household, valued water and tried to use the minimal. And so, my pump didn't get a lot of throughput if you measure it by water, and I never abused it, but the thing only lasted five and a half years. There was no grease in it. But when they, I mean, like I say, it was always noisy. Those bearings might have always been bad. I might have gotten a reject pump. But, you know, so anyway, the pump got replaced. It was a bearing problem. But, you know, they're not going to, those pumps aren't going to come alive at all with those bearings bad. So, I just don't, I don't know about this replacement bearing stuff. It's tricky because you don't want to be saying, oh, we heard there's a problem, and we let it fail for you. It's really, I don't know what the solution is. It's very tricky. I also, my, my system was installed with an alarm. I mean, when I had the thing installed, that's, they said, oh, you, this is it, you got by the alarm. I didn't have a choice. I don't know, it was just part of the package. But like I say, when my grinder pump failed, no alarm went off. I mean, it was overflowing into the yard. Glad it didn't come back at me. But, you know, the alarm didn't work. And, and even now, if you lose your electricity, I mean, how many times have you gone to a flashlight and, oh, it doesn't have batteries? If, if you don't have power in your house, that alarm will not go off if you haven't replaced your batteries, you know? So, you know, it's, it's a pain all around. And I, I also want to say something about owner maintenance, you know, because some of the things that, these pumps are, you know, they're a machine, you've got to take care of them. One of the things that is on the list is hair. Careful with these. And, you know, there's some people who have, more people in their household, more hair, and it's going to be harder for them, and that most of the people who have town sewer don't have to worry about that. Another, yes, am I going on and on?
Well, I, I was wondering how this pertains to the transfer of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a question about how they're going about...
Oh, don't give it up.
I understand you have issues with your grinder pump, but I just, to move along the discussion...
Well, I mean, I mean, we're into the program. We, you know, it's, I'd be really pissed if mine failed and you set up. Too bad, you know, it's, the money's gone. You know, we're into it, but how do we make it better?
We wouldn't do that to you.
Thank you. All right, so I just, I mean, I don't know how you get around it, but, I mean, how do we make this a more efficient, better program? Because, I mean, also, you look at that...
If you're going to continue speaking, I just need you to move closer to the microphone.
You, I look at that discount, twenty-four million, and divide that by five-hundred-and-twenty-five. I thought that's how many grinder pumps? That's forty-seven thousand dollars, you know, twenty-four million divided by five-hundred-and-twenty-five, forty-seven thousand. How, where is that coming from? And then I look at the numbers on all this, every time I look at the numbers and divide out one-point-eight million by five-twenty-five, that's thirty-four hundred dollars. That's a new grinder pump for everyone in four years. We said these things were supposed to last twenty, and now we're saying they're supposed to last ten, and we're spending, we're buying everyone a new one every four years in the, you know, in the cost of this project. I mean, I don't know how you make it better, but, you know, something, something isn't adding up, and I'm not blaming you, it's just, it's weird.
Thank you. Kelly Seleski.
Hi, Carol Kelly Seleski, Precinct Five. One of the things that I read was that the indoor grinder pumps were not approved by the Board of Health. Is that correct?
I believe Richard Day is here, can answer to that. Yeah, that's my understanding and my memory from ten years ago when that incident happened.
Well, I'll go on, and maybe he'll join us.
Yes, until Mr. Day comes out, please continue.
So, what you're telling me is that I bought a house ten years ago that isn't approved by the Board of Health.
No, not that it's not approved, it's that there was a question at the time on whether the town, Richard, you want to come answer that?
Why would I be able to purchase that house under those circumstances?
The approval, the State of Massachusetts Plumbing Code allows for the units to be installed indoors. We obviously did not want the units to be installed indoors for various problems. Richard, you want to...
Well, we, we never installed septic tanks inside the house either. Bottom line is if there's a backup or repair or anything, we don't want it inside the living space in which to occur. So, whether the state approves something or doesn't approve something, we didn't agree that there were going to be a loud style of units. Simple as that, so...
But they exist in our community. There's a whole street of them.
I didn't approve them, and, and who connected them up and whatever, I, I can't tell you. But the issue is, I was asked, would I, would be approved? The answer is no. So, did we go knocking down doors to see what people have or don't have inside their house? No.
I, I think indoors, it falls under the plumbing code anyway.
Correct. And again, technically, even the, I know he's not here, but the plumbing inspector isn't in favor of having indoor appliances that then therefore is, when and if there's an issue of maintenance, indoor failure or whatever, we definitely want the issue to be inside your house. No.
Thank you.
And how will the future, how is that going to affect us? What are your plans for us?
Right now, we service the pumps, period.
Okay.
You know, the, the issue is liability because, you know, like you said, the Board of Health did not approve the indoor units. The sewer department did not approve them.
Okay, but, so I'm standing here with an occupancy current, permit that was provided to me when I purchased the house, and now you're telling me that the Board of Health doesn't approve of the, the unit that is in my house that I obviously have an occupancy permit for, and the whole street is in that circumstance.
If I could, Carol, we, the Board of Selectmen does plan on re-establishing the committee, and I think that's one issue we can have them look at. When they're trying to clear up some of these gray areas, we'll definitely add that to the list, if that's okay, because we will get an answer for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Kruglak.
Gail Kruglak, Precinct Seven. I get, my disconnect on this, what I'm, I find hard to understand is it seems like last...
If you could please be quiet in the back. People can't hear, and people are getting noisy in the room, so if you could please step forward, and those of you in the back, please desist from the conversation.
It feels like a reversal in presentation, that I, I don't understand the disconnect where last year, when we were voting on, listening to the SFA versus the town, the town seemed to be presenting that you didn't feel that you wanted to take responsibility... last year, when we were voting on, listening to the SFA versus the town, the town seemed to be presenting that you didn't feel that you wanted to take responsibility for the pumps. The SFA felt that you did. This year, we're listening to you asking for more money, and them saying that you're spending more money than you need. So could you sort of explain the disconnect there? What you think is the difference in opinion, why you now feel that the money spent is important and they don't?
I think a lot of the issues were brought up, or in, I know my presentation last year, pardon me? The, you know, the issues become, the town is liable for taking over the, you know, the grinder pumps, so there's a huge liability issue that's there. So the town, under federal and state and permitting for the sewer system, has a level of responsibility. So we have to meet that level of responsibility. When the repairs were done privately, there was no such requirement. So homeowners had the choice to do a minimum repair, or, you know, instead of replacing the pump to try to spend, you know, save a few hundred bucks by rebuilding it. Now, what I look at is, and what the bylaw says, it's treated as part of our sewer system, which means we want reliability, and we heard from SFA members that that was one of their key concerns. Don't want failures, we don't want backups in people's homes. I mean, you know, my job is to make sure that we catch everything that we can catch, we're not going to catch 100% of the backups that may happen, but if we know there's an issue out there, we have to take care of it. We don't have the luxury of saying, well, we'll wait until it fails, and if it backs up into a house, well, so, so. Town's liable for that. You know, once we know that something needs to be done, we have to do it. And, you know, and that's the approach I take, and I think the figures that were presented last year reflected that by the DPW. And this year, it's fairly similar figures, that in order to do a job, for the municipality to do a job under its constraints, it's a lot more work than what privately can be done. There's prevailing wage, which adds a lot, you know, to the cost of the labor involved, and other factors that are involved, so that's primarily what the difference is. We're trying to do the right thing to minimize backups and overflows, because now we're responsible for reporting any of these to the, to the DEP, you know, so it's a different set of standards that we have to go by, and that's what the costs reflect, that we have to do the right job, and we have to do it to the best of variability.
The people in, that are presenting the opposing side on the SFA, are those, is that generally made up of people who have these grinder pumps in their homes?
Yeah.
Wouldn't they be just as interested in not having backups in their homes as you are? And that's where the disconnect seems to be, I don't understand that.
I think the belief is, both sides are on the same page, of course, when it comes to what they want. No one wants backups, no one wants failures in anything they do. I think the disconnect is simply that, as I said before, you're dealing with something that you had no full knowledge of, especially without doing the inspections, to the point where, you know, you throw around dollars, everybody, I believe, on both sides are more than reasonable, no one was trying to, you know, get crazy with it, but now reality sets in with what you find and what you need to do to get the system up to what it needs to be. And as I said, to us, it's considered a standard of care, standard of service, do it. It's actually no different than you taking your car to a mechanic, I mean, he tells you you need $1,500 worth of work, and you say, what's it need? Well, I need brakes, and I need two belts and a hose, and you say, well, is there any of that that you can let go for now, because I really don't want to spend that money? Again, it's a decision that you make at that point in time. As Mike said, we lose that decision, simply for the simple fact that we know what needs to be done, and it's our responsibility to that appliance at that point in time, or when there's a failure, we're in trouble for not addressing what should have been addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Foley.
David Foley, precinct five, six Armand Drive. And just to pick up where Gail, on Gail's question, and also on the presenter's comments, the grinder pump is essentially treated as an appliance, as you would consider something like a washing machine or a dishwasher. And it's quite different than an automobile, because with an automobile, if you look at the owner's manual, you'll see that you should change the oil with a certain frequency, and possibly change the spark plugs, and the automatic transmission fluid, et cetera. Now, the grinder pump owner's manual makes clear, there is little, if anything, to be done in the way of maintenance for this appliance. This appliance is really only to be repaired when it breaks, this is very similar to something like a washing machine, so that when pumps get old, they do break, but it's not an issue of maintenance from the owner. And having said that, I'll proceed with the rest of my comments. Speaking as a grinder pump owner, and on behalf of grinder pump owners, and as president of the Grinder Pump Homeowner Association, and also as a member of the Grinder Pump Committee, I would say that the town is meeting the critical needs of the grinder pump owners with this program. The critical need of the grinder pump owner is to have the grinder pump repaired when the grinder pump fails, and the present program calls for a repair of the grinder pump within 24 hours of notification of failure, and this is an exceptional standard of care. It's equivalent to what we received in the first two years of our warranty, and I look at this program as a lifetime warranty on your pump. But having said that, the grinder pump, because it is like an appliance, it's manufactured with that level of liability, and it is impossible to prevent the pump from breaking down periodically, and it does require repairs, and it's not possible really to prevent it from failing. And the repair component, when it has failed, is the most important component of the program, that's what I call the critical component. If that's all we ever got, everybody would be head over heels happy with the program. Now, in this particular program, the way it's been run, I think that more, the budget needs to be looked at more carefully. Now, this contract has been pointed out here, and was also pointed out in the FinCom meeting which preceded this, is an open-ended contract, and the company is free to run up expenses considerably. And in my opinion, I do not view this body as a rubber stamp on overruns to programs, and when this program has expended the funds and is required to come back for town meeting for more funds, I consider that a jeopardy to the basic critical need, because now the money has been depleted, which would otherwise be used for the critical repairs. So as one example, the inspection program on this is, came in at a considerable expense, $140,000, that's about $280 per pump. And when I reviewed the contract, or at least the eight pages of the contract that were provided to me by the town, I found that the contract requires a licensed electrician to be present at the inspection. One of the tasks that the electrician should perform is to check the size of the circuit breakers on the service panel, to make sure they're adequate. Now, I was present at my inspection, that never happened. In fact, I have reports from several inspections where the entire inspection took only 10 minutes, even though in the document from Weston and Sampson, they were estimating that they would be able to provide four or five inspections per day. I don't think we got our money's worth on this. It was not a $289 inspection, and these inspections certainly could have been done for the $84,000 figure, but they weren't. And if these, if these inspectors had not met the line items of the contract, I would request that they come back and complete the inspections at their own cost, and not to charge additional charges to the program. Now, in addition to this $56,000 overrun on the inspection program, large sums of money have also been expended in replacing pumps, for which the homeowner has never reported a problem. And I just have a small excerpt from a, an email that I got from a homeowner, and his comments are, "They reviewed my installation last fall and replaced my functioning grinder pump, because a bearing seemed noisy." Okay, now, if a program has adequate funding of replacing something that's still working, you know, might be considered acceptable, because, as has been pointed out, it might prevent an overtime charge later in the future. But when so much money has been expended, so that a program is actually operating in the red, I consider these elective, because if these pumps were to fail, they could be repaired within 24 hours, and these pumps will fail for other reasons. A noisy bearing is by no means the most common failure for these pumps, it's the motor relay, which is completely unpredictable and will fail at any time. That will happen anyway, and it cannot be prevented. The pumps are not, they don't have dual systems, they're, they will break down, that's an unavoidable consequence. Okay, let me just see where I'm at. A pump replacement, that's a considerable gain for Weston and Sampson, and they're naturally going to recommend those with a great frequency, but I don't think they should simply all be done at every time that they recommend that. They make $2,000 every time they do that, and a pump replacement is not a very complicated procedure, actually. Now, there are many legitimate needs in this town that are currently not being met, and that's because we have a tight budget condition. So that's why I'm scrutinizing this program. I believe this program, while in the first year, has gone over and above what was needed or called for, either by the Grinder Pump Committee itself and the Homeowner Association. And I also believe that there is plans for this program to grow even larger, and I think these need to be held in check and reviewed, to view other options, to possibly provide the critical need within what I would call and agreed upon budget, not to simply have an open checkbook. And that's essentially all of my comments. I was at the FinCom meeting beforehand, and there was some discussion about what would happen if we didn't approve this, and would we, you know, be defaulting and all that sort of thing, and so I really don't know what the answer to that is, all I can say is I'm disappointed that we've run out of money, and it was not by any means by repairing pumps that have failed. That's, if you total up what is probably about 40 or so elective replacements at $2,000 each, that's $80,000, and if you throw $56,000 in, that total gets pretty close up to the deficiency here. So I think this needs to be looked at very carefully, thank you.
Dave Dubinsky, precinct two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speakers, the town manager, the finance folks, and the Board of Selectmen. So, the essence of this discussion is an additional cost over and above what was predicted under Article 25, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, as a trustee for Williamsburg, I represent not only precinct two, but more specifically Williamsburg. 535 town home, townhouse condominium owners. In a situation where, as I pointed out in the debate last spring, we have our own self-contained sewer system, we have a pumping station, we have two grinder pumps, we have a substation that feeds from Williamsburg two into Williamsburg one, and ultimately out into the town line. There's an expense that we deal with on an everyday basis, and that expense, roughly in round numbers, for the sake of brevity, runs to about $50 a year for the individual unit owners or townhouse owners.
Mr. Dubinsky, I just want to make sure that this is gonna, you said you had a question for all these individuals, so I'm hoping to give them adequate.
Well, I think we're in a debate stage.
Debate, but you said this was going to be a question to all of them, so I was...
I asked, I asked a question.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm setting up the question.
All right, thank you.
So, it's roughly $50 a year that we're all spending in our condo fees to support our pumping station and our sewer system, internal sewer system. If one of our grinder pumps were to become dysfunctional, it would cost us $125 an owner on top of that. If our entire lift station were to completely become dysfunctional, it would be $1,050, $1,050 per owner. Now, in addition to all of these liabilities, we're all paying our sewer commitment to the town of Chelmsford. Now, when I spoke last spring, there was a sense of understanding from the Board of Selectmen at that time, that this was basically a double jeopardy type of situation. I met with other members of different condo associations, and apparently Williamsburg is the only one that has an, only condo association that has a complete self-contained sewer system, that's feeding into the town utility. So my point is, when are we going to be brought into this equation and receive some relief and be released from this double jeopardy that now, under this circumstance, is now presenting additional expense? That's my question.
To answer the question, the answer to the question is, is when the bylaw gets amended. Right now, the bylaw only makes the town responsible for single and two-family homes.
Correct.
If you wish to make multi-families larger than that, then bring a bylaw to this town meeting and let them vote to amend the bylaw. Until that time, we're only responsible for single-family and two-family homes.
I understand it.
And that's the answer to your question.
Yes, it did. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood where we were. Thank you.
Sir.
Yeah, Bob McEnany, 10 Gray Street. My question is, I'm a little surprised, only because we're talking so many dollars, but this winter, I was down to Florida, and my daughter noticed that I had an alarm going on in my house, grinder pump alarm, so I said, oh, check the house, check the basement, no, no one's living there, we haven't lived there for over a month, and we had still a month to go before we came home, so there was nothing critical. She set the alarm, silenced the alarm, and I made a call, and my mistake was to call on a Sunday, because I told them, no one's there, everything's fine, I mean, I know there's a problem, however, there's no backup, there's no one using the house, so don't worry about getting right on this. Oh, no, they said, we're instructed to go right out, we have to go right out today. I said, nobody's home, nobody's using the house. Why pay a premium to do something like this on a Sunday or Sunday night? No, have to do it. So, if we're talking cost, and I'm just one grinder pump owner, and if that's an isolated situation, I don't know. If it's happened, you know, to me, once, is too much. Now, you might have a policy where you say, hey, I call, I must go, but if the homeowner is saying, hey, I need you now, fine, but if the homeowner's saying, please don't rush out here, it's a Sunday, it can wait till Monday morning, wouldn't you take that into consideration?
Yeah, you'd have to look at everything and take it into consideration, but number one, you're gone for over a month, and you had an alarm, so there's some kind of...
You know what it was? You want to know what it was? That's what they told me, a loose light bulb caused the actual alarm.
Okay.
But I mean, things like that happen.
Right.
However, I'm gone for a month, my daughters live next door to me, they're in that house, because of the winter primarily, every day, just checking on it for me. So, so that's that, I'm not worried about, that's my business, whether I'm gone for a month. My question is, is that's, if the homeowner requests repairs for the next morning, rather than pay a premium, is that something that should be considered?
Oh, of course, if you requested the repair to come the next day.
I did.
That should have, that should have come the next day. I'm not, I'm not familiar with your particular case.
Yeah, well, I could give you the date and time, and you could look at it, but that's what was told to me. So, just so you know, and I'm sure that light bulb ended up costing, you know, on a Sunday night or afternoon... night or afternoon, several hundred dollars, so-
All right. Unfortunately, you don't know what you're dealing with until you get there, so-
I do understand that. I do understand that, but I did, you know, I know there was no backup, I know the system wasn't running. There was no immediate danger or harm to the pump, the pump wasn't running, because they said, "No, they can't hear the pump."
Mr. McEnany, I would just suggest, in the interest of time, if you have specifics about this, we take it offline with the individuals-
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
And I'd just like to remind everybody, we are in discussion, debate with regard to the transfer of the $150,000 for this article. Mr. Newcomb.
Tom Newcomb, Precinct 9, and actually, I want to get right to the debate. First off, when I asked a question earlier, I asked about the impact of $150,000 on sewer rates, and the response was that it would have no impact, and I respectfully disagree because even though it might be coming from free cash, that free cash is money that could be used to offset other expenses or to reduce rates. So it may not directly this year have an impact on the rate payers and what we pay. It does impact us because if I spend $150 or $150,000 in this instance, it still has to come from somewhere, and it has to be made up, so it does make a direct impact on that. My other concerns are, you know, try and keep this brief, is that I hear a lot of discussion about trying to limit what the town does in terms of limit the inspections. The Sewer Fairness Alliance is saying that we shouldn't be making all these inspections, and unfortunately, when this bylaw was passed, which I vehemently opposed and still do, but we took on a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility, to take care of these, and we have to do the inspection so we know the extent of the liability that we're up against. But again, just as we did when this was passed originally, there are a tremendous number of uncertainties and unanswered questions, and I urge that we, that we vote this down because we do not have sufficient information to pass this. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
Will Wagner, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Council. I had a question on the town's liability with regards to the wording of the current bylaw, which I understand is gray and leaves some room for interpretation. Is the town liable if the pump fails at any point and backs up into the owner's basement and thus causes damage?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. What caused the backup?
Some pump failure.
Well, the bylaw says that the town is responsible to maintain grinder pumps, except in a circumstance where the owner does not properly use the sewer system, and I believe there are provisions in the bylaw in terms of what, what things have, items that cannot be put into the sewer system.
Correct. That was spelled out, but that was about the only thing that was spelled out.
So the only, the only, I mean, obviously, it would be a very fact-intensive situation, and I'm not comfortable giving you a yes or no answer here as to whether the town would be liable. I will tell you that, and this was discussed last year, the town, when you, when town meeting adopted that bylaw, agreed to take over the responsibility for maintenance of the grinder pumps. So to that extent, the town has to maintain the grinder pumps but is not responsible if the owner does not properly use the sewer system. I would also point out that, and I believe I said this last year as well, the town maintains general liability insurance. So whether or not a backup into someone's home would be the responsibility of the town, and whether or not the town's insurance company would accept liability and defend and indemnify the town would be a question that would have to be answered on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. So let me expand and make that a little more specific then. We have several pumps which the Sewer Fairness Alliance has stated they don't believe they need to be replaced because they're just bearings making noises. The town has indicated that they believe these do need replacement because they indicate a possible failure. If one of these pumps, which has been inspected and the town has deemed a possible failure, fails and causes damage, would that be town liability in that case?
Are you assuming that the town determined that the pump had to be replaced but did not replace it?
Yes. The town has, the town has marked several pumps as potential failures. If this gets voted down, I'm assuming that there's no money to replace those potential failures, and therefore, they've been identified but were not replaced. And if that pump then fails, it has been identified as a problematic pump, was not replaced in a timely manner because of the lack of funds, it now fails, is the town liable for the damage, whether it's through insurance or not?
Well, I think the town would potentially have a defense, that it acted in good faith, it came to town meeting asking for an appropriation of money to fulfill its obligations under the bylaw, and the town meeting, in its judgment, decided not to appropriate the money. Now, is that a sufficient defense to a lawsuit? Well, if that's all you're gonna give me, I'll do the best I can.
Okay. Thank you. So to the rest of town meeting, I would like to encourage you to pass this article as requested, and for Fall Town Meeting, consider amending the existing sewer bylaw to clarify and fix the issues that are obvious in its initial implementation. Thank you.
Mr. Thoron.
Glenn Thoron, Precinct 5. Last year, when the Sewer Fairness Alliance came before us and asked us to take on this commitment to maintain the grinder pumps, it was my impression, the impression of other people, that we would maintain them about the same way as a responsible homeowner would maintain the grinder pumps. And when they came, and they worked at, the speaker for the Sewer Fairness Alliance, because we don't use names, came up here and talked about what they saw for the responsibility of maintaining an appliance. I thought the analogy was very good. You don't replace parts on your dishwasher, parts on your washing machine if they're a little bit noisy and everything is working fine. I find the expenses here, the fact that we've gone over the expenses for the inspections and are going over the expenses on the replacement of pumps based on noisy bearings to be a little bit excessive. It's more, you know, I'm getting the impression it's a gold-plated approach to something that the Sewer Fairness Alliance has tried to put in an economical and reasonable program together on. So one of the things I would suggest is we look at the procedures that are being used to analyze what a failure might be and to collect the data that seems to be there but not accumulated so that we have something to go by for future years. And if we are replacing pumps, if there is a pump that costs 30% more but lasts twice as long, I can do the math, you know, and that might be the right way to go as opposed to going through E1 pumps over and over again, even if we have the parts. So I'm not going to vote for this allocation of funds because I really don't know what's going on. We have one data point that was presented tonight, one, on noisy bearings. Remember what it was? A woman bought a house, and five and a half years later, her noisy pump failed, five and a half years later. But now, we're making the assumption that if it has a noisy bearing, it's going to be failing in two or three months, so we gotta replace something. So, you know, I'd like to see more data, I'd like to see a more responsible approach to making the decisions on this before we allocate this additional money. It's a difficult decision to make, but I think the Sewer Fairness Alliance has been incredibly fair, if I can be redundant, in trying to get the best bang for the buck for the town. And looking at the future charts here, in replacing panels that are still operational and upgrading and doing preventative maintenance for things that are still operational just because you can, may not be the best bang for the buck for the town.
Francis McDougall, Precinct 1. I'd like to move the question.
Ms. McDougall, given there's no one behind you, I'm not gonna take a vote on the motion to move the question. We'll go right to the main motion, but before I do that, the Board of Selectmen said they were gonna defer their recommendation till they heard all the debate.
We're looking a little neutral right now. All right. Give us a moment. Jenna's gonna start. Torture.
No, I'm just saying, instead of trying to ask me what my bill is, just talk about it.
Oh, you need another form.
In the interest of time, I would ask you if you could please-
Did you speed it up?
Yes.
I just have a quick question, if that's okay?
I think time for question and answer is over. We've had a motion to move the question. I'm suspending that for a vote on the main motion because there was no one there. I don't think anybody else is gonna entertain a question. I don't mean to be unfair, but at this point-
Okay. Well, I guess I'll open this up for discussion. I'll go ahead and tell the other members how I'm inclined to vote, even though at Fall Town Meeting-
I know what the point of order is. We've asked for a recommendation. The Finance Committee gave us a simple yes or no.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're looking for at this point, that's what-
You're not looking for me to explain my answer?
No, I had asked, the Selectman Hanson said he would wait till debate and then give the Board's recommendations, so we're looking for-
Oh, okay. I'm voting no.
This is Kelly B. for Chancellor Telleme. Two in favor and three opposed.
Okay. All right. At this point, there's no further discussion because we did have a motion to move the question, but given the fact that at the time, there was no one in line, like the other evening, we're not gonna have a vote, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chase, you weren't in line when Ms. McDougall made the motion to move the question. Since there were no other folks in line at that time, I'm now going to move directly to the main motion. I see some confused faces. Rather than have a quick vote on the motion to move the question, Ms. Carbon, it's not working? Well, we haven't put anything up on the screen yet.
You'll see it.
I'm not sure you want her to come. All right.
Are you working? Are you ready?
Yes. We're gonna put up on the main motion, this is the motion to transfer the $150,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to the line item. One is a yes in favor of the transfer of money, two is opposed. Once it's put up on the screen, you'll have 35 seconds.
So this is not going to be an easy vote for the town meeting representatives. It looks like it's gonna be very close, and of course, they have the opportunity to change their votes, so what you're seeing on the screen can go back and forth. At the moment, it's going to be voted down, which means that there will be basically no further money for grinder pump repairs between now and the end of the fiscal year, which is at the end of June, which is roughly two months.
Those in favor, 67. Those opposed, 74. With one abstention, the motion fails. At this point, I will turn the moderators' role back over to the-
And that concludes the special town meeting. The one and only warrant article was to provide more money for the grinder pump repairs in the remainder of this fiscal year. This will come up again later when the issue is revisited for fiscal 2016.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Just a show of hands, all in favor of dissolving the special town meeting? Opposed, passes. We now go back to the original, the Spring Town Meeting, and we start with Article 7. I believe.
John, I need you to change those numbers.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In light of the previous vote, I'd like to amend this main motion here to the town meeting or present it in a revised form. Basically, what I'm doing is I'm gonna delete $170,000 in expenses, so therefore, the motion would be to move that the town appropriate the following sums to operate the Sewer Enterprise for fiscal year 2016. Personnel services, the 908, 348, and under expenses, it will now read $2,807,140, and therefore, the total would be $3,715,488, and that the $3,715,488 be raised from Sewer Enterprise revenues. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Obviously, what I've done here is I've taken out the $170,000 that would've been in place for the upcoming year had this been the program that the town was following. Well, in light of the vote, it doesn't make sense to do that anymore. In essence, with that being the case, the Sewer Enterprise budget for the upcoming year will actually be decreasing by almost $30,000 over the current year's budget. Again, this budget, as presented, factors into all of the costs for running the standalone sewer operation, including our labor contractual obligations, our contractual obligations to the city of Lowell for the treatment of our waste, as well as the treatment of grinder pumps per the direction earlier this evening, and the other expenses in operating the sewer system. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the presenter?
Paul Regazio, Precinct 7. This is the operating budget for the sewer system. Your town budget shows $2 million coming from the sewer system. Where is that? Is that coming out of the, where is that money coming from? In your operating budget, you show funds of $2 million, I forget the exact number.
You mean, going back to the general operating budget of the town?
Going back to the general, I guess, to pay off the sewer debt, some of the-
Yeah, that's right. That is, that's totally-
But where's that? That money's not here, though.
Right. That money is not, this is just for the operation of the sewer system. The money that comes from the sewer betterments pays for the debt service for the sewer project, which is part of the town's operating budget.
So the sewer betterment is a different set of monies?
Different monies.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary France, Precinct 6. Given now that the total, the bottom line for the sewer system under this article will be less than the current fiscal year, can we assume there will be no rate increase?
No.
Thank you.
And the reason for that, it justifies the answer. The reason for that is there are revenues that go into the Sewer Enterprise budget that go beyond that of the rate payers of the community. For example, up until through this current year, we were receiving a payment from the town of Tingsboro for being part, buying into our portion of the system. That expense goes away next year. So therefore, when, even though the amount of the budget is dropping slightly, that we're more than offsetting that type of an expense. So we do anticipate a rate increase next year. I believe it was about 2% under the current budget, relating those facts.
There being no further questions, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now is the time for discussion. If anyone has any discussion on this warrant article?
Beth Logan. I'm sorry, I was trying to amend the other ones so if a grinder pump failed, we could fix it in the next two months, but I appreciate this change. I'm just, I wanna just get a clarification from the Board of Selectmen that we are going to form a committee to relook at this situation, clean up the bylaw, to make it more clear, and hopefully, that will be done ASAP, so we'll have something in the fall. Is that your target?
As soon as possible. We'll have to speak with the committee once they're formed about their timeline. I think that's a good goal, and I believe most of the committee members have expressed interest in being reappointed. But yeah, as soon as possible for reforming committees, definitely a good timeline. We are doing that.
And I did have, like I said, I was, sorry, I was up there trying to find out the right amendment to do. What happens if something happens in the next two months? Does the money come out of this? Does it come out of some, we're just-
This money can only be expended as of July 1st. That's the new fiscal year. We are going to go tomorrow and examine what we can do, because we know we're gonna have issues over the next couple of months, and we're gonna make our commitment in terms of, we have to respond because we have- terms of, we have to respond because we have a liability. It's no different than if there's a pothole in the street. We can't use it as a defense. We have no money to fill the pothole. So, we will respond in a minimalist situation, which sort of, we'll respond when a system fails. I don't know why we did the inspections if we're only supposed to respond when it fails. But the bottom line is, we've done the inspections, and now we're going to respond when a system fails. That's what we'll do.
Okay, thank you. And I just think that we, hopefully, we'll learn the lesson that we have to have really crisp, clear bylaws.
Okay, thank you. So, we ready to vote on this? Okay, so a yes vote is to approve the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2016, and no is not to approve it.
And so, with an hour and a half of preliminary debate on the special town meeting warrant, clearly, the foundation was laid for a streamlined approach on this one, which again covers fiscal 2016. As was just pointed out, the town has the liability to repair these grinder pumps in case of an emergency. And Paul Cohen will probably work with DPW.
Okay, 135 voted in favor, three voted in opposition, and two abstained. So, the article passes. We will now proceed to Article VIII.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article VIII is the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. The Golf Course is managed by a professional management company, as it has since its inception, going back now over 20 years, back in the mid-'90s. The Golf Course Enterprise budget means that this is not funded from the property tax levy. The estimated revenue for the year ahead under our lease agreement is $30,000, and that's the amount that we're seeking under this article, for the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This is the time for question and answer. Apparently, no one has any questions. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now's the time for discussion. Is there any discussion on this article? There appears to be none. We will vote on Article VIII. A vote in favor is to fund the Golf Club Enterprise Fund.
The next couple of articles will, as this one has, will proceed in pretty rapid-fire fashion. I think that by the time we get to Article 12, which is the fiscal 2016 capital budget, then we'll kind of slow down and take it a little bit more carefully. The goal here, of course, is to try to get through the entire warrant before 11 o'clock.
The final vote is 137 in favor, one opposed, one abstention. The article passes. We will now proceed to Article IX. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article IX is funding for the reserve fund. The reserve fund is available to the outside of town meeting, to the Finance Committee, to provide for extraordinary unforeseen expenditures that may arise during the course of the year when town meeting's not in session. The requested amount remains at $400,000, which is about a third of a percentage of the town's $119 million operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now's the time for question and answers. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Sheila Pishat, 26 Shed Lane. I can't believe I'm asking this question, but I know that there's $103,000 left in the current reserve fund. Is that possible to roll that amount over into this existing fund for any situations that might occur next year, so that it would be $503,000 that we would be voting on?
No. No, but you can't legally do that, but you may not want to do that even if you could, because we still have two months remaining in the fiscal year where an issue or circumstance could arise. And if we drain that fund to zero, then we'd have nothing to meet in an extraordinary emergency situation between now and June 30th.
So, that would just go into October's town meeting?
It will go into the general fund at the end of the year and be calculated as next year as free cash if it's not expended.
Bob Joyce, 103 Turnpike Road, Precinct 1. Could we have, I don't know if you have the slide, but could we have a breakdown of how we spent it this year?
Yes, I do have that detailed slide of how we spent it. To date, we've spent $233,422 of the reserve fund. The first expenditure was made outside of town meeting, and that brought the fund from $400,000 down to $362,600. And that was for the town accountant to work with the school business manager to unify the chart of accounts between the towns and the schools.
That was $37,000.
That was, exactly, $400, $37,400. Under Article II this evening, in a last session of town meeting, we expended $187,500 to doing the budget adjustments that were approved. And then, under Article III, we spent $8522, which was for the payment of prior year unpaid bills. So, that's the year-to-date utilization of the reserve fund.
Is the 180, what was the second one? 180?
$187,500.
Is that truly an unforeseen?
No. As I mentioned earlier, when you're outside of town meeting, the Finance Committee has discretion unilaterally by a vote of its membership to expend that money for extraordinary unforeseen expenditures. When we're in town meeting, it's an available fund for appropriation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more questions for the presenter? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this warrant article?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends this article by four to one vote.
Now's the time for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to hear the rationale of the Selectmen who was recommending against this particular article.
One moment.
I was the one vote against it, and I have a philosophical difference as to how the reserve fund is spent. Years ago, it was only like $100,000 or $150,000. That's good. Now, we're creeping up to half a million dollars. I don't like the fact, and I'm sure I'll get an email from the Chairman of the Finance Committee, but I don't like the fact that the Finance Committee outside of town meeting can appropriate money without other approvals, be it the town meeting or be it the Board of Selectmen. But they can actually, they're appointed people, and they can actually appropriate money out of that account. And I take exception to that, and that's why I voted against it.
And I understand the logic of that, but I would ask a follow-up question, Mr. Moderator, through you to the Selectmen. Is there any amount of money that you would be in favor of the Finance Committee approving, or is it the fact that they shouldn't have this authority at all?
Well, my philosophical is that they shouldn't have the ability to do it all. But if I had to pick a number, I would say under $100,000.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there being no further discussion, we will vote on the article. A yes vote is to fund the Finance Committee's reserve fund, and no vote is not to.
An anecdote from our past. At one point, Chelmsford Telemedia desperately needed a replacement camera. This is maybe 15 years ago. And it was this very fund, the Finance Committee's discretionary fund, that allowed us to purchase a replacement when our budget didn't allow for it. We've become a lot more self-sufficient since then, but we were grateful to have that fund available to us at the time.
The final vote is 131 in favor, 12 opposed, no abstention. The article passes. We will now proceed to Article 10, I believe, is being, there's no action being taken?
Yes, that's correct. No action. We have, we've not reached agreement with either of the two police unions.
Okay, so we'll proceed to Article 11. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Article 11 is the annual reauthorization of the revolving funds. And it's the same language and motion and amounts that we had in the previous years. And what I've done to be efficient is I've just listed the current balances in those five revolving fund purposes. Again, money goes in for the programs, is then limited for those uses, and then is expended. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now's the time for question and answer. Are there any? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article.
The Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? There being none, we will vote on Article 11. A yes vote is to fund the revolving accounts.
Take a close look, folks, because this might be the only unanimous vote that you see coming out of town meeting in a long time. Revolving funds are typically just a normal course of events for the town government. It helps keep things operating smoothly.
Final vote is 141 in favor, zero opposed, no abstentions. The article passes. Article 12 is the proposed capital budget for fiscal year 2016. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. For this article, I'd like to have John Souzer, our Finance Director, who is the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, present on this article.
Good evening. For the town, capital planning is an ongoing process throughout the year. The Capital Planning Committee holds public hearings and works in cooperation with our town manager to develop the annual capital budget each year. The fiscal year 16 capital budget brought forward for your consideration this evening was recommended by the Capital Planning Committee, which includes the following members: Dennis Bach, citizen member; Nick DeSilvio, representing the school committee; Tom Gilroy, representing the Finance Committee; John Morrison, a citizen member; Andy Sillich, representing the Board of Library Trustees; Darlene Lucy, our town accountant, and myself. On this slide, you see that projects are broken out in totals by functional area. In the first three categories, information technology, community services, and public safety account for about 22%. Public Works projects account for about 26%. Finally, improvements for our school buildings, school technology, and school security account for about 50%. The funding level for all the projects totals just over $3.2 million. Next, we'll look at the projects by category. In information technology, we have a disaster recovery site upgrade for $100,000. And the purpose of this is that in the event of a disaster, either natural or man-made, this will provide us with the capacity to continue our daily network and technology operations. It replaces equipment that's at the end of its useful life. Next, we have a digital document archive for $35,000. What that does is that provides us with a archive for digital documents that has a legal timestamp. And the importance of that is that, under public records law, that gives us the ability to have a digital record time-stamped, if you will, so that in effect, it functions just as you would a regular paper record that's an official public record. Moving on to community services, we have two projects that involve the senior center, as well as a computer replacement for the library. The building that we're gathered in here this evening was opened around 1989. It's now over 25 years old. And although it's been well-maintained over the years, the needs of the population that the senior center serves has changed during that time. The first project involves the renovation of the sun porch area into a Wi-Fi cafe. Currently, the porch, sun porch area is not heated by an HVAC system. So, as you can imagine, New England, that greatly limits its use. The town will be partnering with Neshoba Tech for construction and HVAC work to be completed as a community service project, and that helped reduce the cost to $80,058. This project was deferred from last year's capital plan. Next, we have a facilities upgrade for the senior center for the construction of a fitness room. And as you see on the slides, there's really three parts to this project. First, converting the current activity room that you see in the first picture into a fitness room. Second, we're going to be renovating the existing storage area into an activity room. And then, third, constructing a storage area in a corner of this room to accommodate kitchen storage needs for the facility. So, the cost of these improvements is $156,385. This project was also deferred from last year's capital plan. Next, the public library, there's a project for $30,920, which includes a plan to replace computers so that the library's hardware, computer hardware and software stays upgraded. It's part of the library's long-term plan to replace computers on a four- to six-year rotating basis. And the computers that are taken out of high-traffic areas will be stepped down to functions at wherever possible in lower-traffic areas. Under public safety, there are two projects for the police department, which I'd like to explain to you, and also two for the fire department. For the police department, we have a, the first project involves the replacement of the surveillance camera system for the interior and exterior of the police department headquarters. The current system is over 10 years old. It's functioning obsolete. It has three analog recorders that actually record to VHS videocassettes. The second project involves the replacement of the current animal control vehicle for $40,000. The current vehicle is not up to today's standards. The new vehicle will allow, will provide for an animal containment module, which you see in the drawing on the slide. And that allows the animal control officer to separate deceased animals from live animals. For the fire department, there are two projects, just to run through those with you. The first is the replacement of the low-band emergency alerting system that's used for all the firefighters in all the stations. The current low-band paging system is obsolete, and it's no longer supported by the vendor, and it's well over 15 years old. The second is the replacement of a fire command vehicle for $57,500. The current vehicle, it's a 2005 Ford Expedition, used by the shift commander. And the goal here is to take this vehicle and then step it down to another firefighter, the captain, and ultimately, an older Crown Victoria will be taken out of service. Under public works, there's a, where the plan provides for an investment of $520,000 for traditional, what we would call, infrastructure projects. $100,000 is included for drainage, which covers improvements in selected areas of Chumsford Street, Dunstable Road, and Meadowbrook Road. $220,000 for sidewalk construction, which will fund improvements in selected areas on Acton Road, North Road, and Westford Street, as well as $200,000 for roadway maintenance. And it's always good to point out, the town, Chumsford is very large geographically. We have 200 miles of roads, and we need to keep up and resurface any parts of it each year so that we don't fall into a trap where all of the roads are deteriorating at one time. Based on the pavement management survey, repairs are planned for Stewart Road, Manser Drive, Whitman Street, and Janet Road. For public works, equipment and vehicles, the projects involve the replacement of a medium-duty dump truck at a cost of $60,000. The current vehicle is a year 2000. It has approximately 147,000 miles. It's actually a repurposed bucket truck. And as it was explained to the Capital Planning Committee, this truck is well beyond its useful life. The second item is a purchase of a mid-sized excavator for just over $228,000. The DPW Highway Division currently leases an excavator at a cost of $35,000 per year. The excavator's expected to have a useful life of about 18 to 20 years. This project was also deferred from a prior year. And finally, on this slide, there's a replacement of a summit, for the cemetery department, a 2005 dump truck with a plow. It's a, this truck is currently used to plow not only the cemeteries, but also participates in snow removal operations with the DPW townwide. the cemeteries, but also participates in snow removal operations with the DPW townwide. This truck replacement was deferred from last year's capital plan. Moving on to municipal facilities, there's a planned pickup truck replacement at a cost of $42,600. The current pickup truck is a 2001, has approximately over 90,000 miles. This truck is also used to plow parking lots in various town facilities and school facilities as well. Under school facilities, there's three projects. The first is the complete renovation of all the restrooms at Chumsford High School at a cost of $815,000. As it says on the slide, all of the restrooms in the school are original. And as we know, Chumsford High School opened around 1974. So, being over 40 years old, all of the restrooms have a number of problems. These include damaged and worn-out privacy partitions, older plumbing fixtures, floor tiles that are on repair, beyond repair, et cetera. This project was deferred from last year's capital plan. The next two projects involve the school administration headquarters at 230 North Road. The plan includes over $157,000 for the replacement of the roof of that building. It currently has a rubber roof. If any of you have been there from meeting over the past several months, you know that the roof is in tough condition. Leaks have persisted for a while. The next project actually dovetails well in with the roof replacement. As many of you know, the school administration building houses the Network Operations Center for all of the town and school network. And over the years, as our technology capacity has grown, the server room and the HVAC equipment that cools that room has also grown, and it's been expanded. And what the goal of this is, we currently have about five separate units that are somewhat inefficient to cool this room. This project is going to replace five inefficient units with two high-efficiency rooftop units. And the goal, as you might imagine, is since you're already up on the roof doing the construction of that, it's the perfect time to replace these units. Next is school technology. There are several projects here that are actually the next phases, and I'll explain those, of some of the multi-year investments the town has made in technology. The wireless initiative, this is the fourth year, $80,000 is going to provide wireless access at the Bayman South Row Schools. This was deferred from last year. We have a core switch replacement for the elementary and middle schools. The core switch is basically the backbone of any computer network, and it's sort of the gateway to the Internet and other functions. Also, we have a computer replacement planned in all the high-traffic labs. That's at a cost of $70,000. Existing computers in the high-traffic labs will be stepped down to or repurposed into lower and medium-traffic lab environments. And then, we have an interactive whiteboard project for the 21st Century Classroom. That's a cost of $150,000. Under school security is the next phase of a keyless entry system for $75,000, plus the security system cameras, the next phase of that, for $90,000. So, to summarize, the project's total, just over $3.27 million. You can see, after applying recaptured funds of $1,403, and also bond premiums that the town is required to use on a similar type of project, of $257,935, that leaves us a total of just over $3 million to be financed through bonds. This next slide, you've seen before. This is a summary of all the ages and inventory of all our school and municipal buildings. It's been updated. If you look at it closely, with the exception of the newly constructed Senate Fire Station, the majority of all our schools and fire stations and other buildings were constructed in the late '60s and early ' '70s. As these facilities continue to age, we're going to need to make continued capital investments and improvements. A question arose at the pre-town meeting information session regarding recaptured funds. And just for me to explain that for any representatives that may be new this year, recaptured funds are basically leftovers from prior-year completed capital projects. So, what happens is, the capital project's completed. It may have come in slightly under budget, so there are extra funds left over. Because we've borrowed for those, those need to be reapplied. They can't just go to the general fund. What happens is, we reapply them to reduce the borrowing costs for this year, the next capital plan. We had a question come up. What's really been the history over the last few years of the use of recaptured funds? And you can see that, based on the mix of the prior-year plan, what projects have been completed, it really varies. When you look back, this slide shows from 2007 up to the present day. And you can see that the 11... You can see that it's down significantly this year. We also have a column called "Other Financing", and whenever we have one-time sources of revenue that we can apply towards capital, we've done that. You see that in 2013, 2014, and then again this year in 2015. Here's a capital funding history showing from 1995 to 2005. And you see that, when you look over the slide, you see that the capital budget has varied over the years. But you can see that it was funded at $2.6 million as far back as 2002. Going forward, here's the capital funding history from 2006 to this, the current fiscal year. And you see that, again, the capital levels of... The funding levels have varied. But if you look at the capital funding level as a percentage of the town's operating budget, you see that it's always right around 2.73. If you look at roughly a 10-year average, you come out with about 2.73 percent of the town's operating budget is devoted to capital. And you see that the FY '16 capital improvement plan is very close to that, where it equals This next chart is really... It's the same data that you just saw. Sometimes people have a... Can interpret things better with graphs, so it's just to show it as a percentage of the town's operating budget. And you can see the trend there. It's to show how the FY '16 capital plan stacks up against prior years. And then, finally, I'd end by noting that when we developed the capital budget, the Capital Planning Committee has to look not only at the coming fiscal year, but also has to look further out in the horizon. What projects are in the pipeline that we know are coming down the road? And as you can see here, for the next four fiscal years, from '17 through '20, the projects that have been submitted are right around $4 million per year. The total of them is $15.9 million. You can learn more about all of the future projects that have been submitted in the Town Budget Manual from about the second half. It's in Section H, and you can read more about all those projects. So, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Okay. Actually, what we're going to do is, there are two separate amendments to the capital budget, and I'd like to entertain those amendments first. So, Mr. Joyce, you have two amendments? Yes.
Don't we generally do...
I understand, but for the purpose of saving time, I'd rather have these two amendments dealt with first, and then we can go back, depending on what the vote is, to deal with the rest of the capital budget.
Just for point of authority, do you plan to do a separate question and answer and debate for each of these amendments?
Yes, that's what we would have to do.
Question and answer and debate follow the main motion?
That's what we always do.
I submitted this amendment, and in essence, what it does is, it takes the midsize excavator from the Public Works for $278,553 and deletes it. And then, the second part of that is a pickup truck for the Public Facilities Group for $42,800, and we delete that. And the reason I'm questioning...
Bob, can you check that against the slide? Is it 42...?
The slide is inaccurate. Because the amendments came on one piece of paper, they were meant to be two separate warrant amendments. So, the first one is to reduce just the Public Works midsize excavator for $228,553, and the second was the $42.6 for the municipal facilities pickup truck.
I said $278. So, it's $228?
$228 is what is on the... Is on your motion.
Okay. I'm reading from...
And that is consistent with the Public Works midsize excavator.
Okay. The reason I'm proposing these two articles is because we are in times where we need to save money. And we can't seem to save money on budgets without, you know, cutting jobs. And so, in an effort to save jobs, I'm suggesting that we back off on a few of the capital items. The $228,553 is a brand-new item. In other words, it's not replacing an item that we have. And in keeping with the level budget funding of not adding people, then we should have the same consistency in our capital. If there is something that isn't in the department now, then we shouldn't buy it brand-new. $228,553 is a lot of money. And the trade-off is $35,000, which we've done almost forever. And I don't see that we need to expend this kind of capital. The usage, maybe some snow use, and maybe some street reconstruction, but certainly, it's no reason to spend that kind of money now. Our town manager has said so many times this fall, "Our back is against the wall." Well, in keeping with that statement, "Our back is against the wall," I don't want to spend that $228,000. And I think you, as good-town meeting members, should look at voting in favor of this motion, because it does... It is a big expense. Okay, the second item is the pickup truck for Public Facilities, $42,800.
$600.
$600. I'm reading from carbon copies here. $42,600. For pretty much all the reasons except that it's a... It is a replacement vehicle, I'm suggesting that we wait at least a year for this. If you've noticed at all, our Public Facilities and Public DPW drive very nice trucks. I mean, you know, full cab crew, tinted glass. I haven't been in them, but they probably have stereos and everything else in it. We... Well, I'm just telling you what we're buying, okay? So, most EPWs, if you go to other towns, you'll see that it's a pickup truck, and it's basically a base vehicle with maybe capability for plowing. So, for this reason, I'm recommending that the pickup truck, plus it doesn't have, I think they said, 91,000 miles on it. Certainly, all of us drive cars and trucks past that mileage. So, I'm asking that you support that part of the amendment as well. And, Ms. Moderator, I'd like to ask that we take separate votes on these, to value the question.
So, you want to take a vote on each particular of these two items?
Yes.
That's fine. We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Question and answer for the proponent.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Sam Chase, Precinct 1. Throw you to the presenter. On the Public Works midsize excavator, and I'm not sure whether I heard this correctly or not, so this is a question to you, and maybe to anyone else who can answer. Are you proposing that we not have a midsize excavator?
Yes. We don't have one now, and we never have had one.
Okay. The reason I'm...
We rented it.
The reason I'm asking the question is because I thought I heard we currently lease one. Is that correct?
Yeah, for $35,000, I believe.
Okay. And that's an annual cost of lease?
That would be a question the man behind you would have to answer.
All right. I'll assume that there's a yes on that until I'm told differently.
I would assume it too.
All right. So, in other words, for as long as, for the foreseeable future, my question is, we can expect to lease that every year? Or is it your intention that we not lease one after this year?
No. I would say we continue to do what we've always done. And quite honestly, I don't know if that lease is for the entire year, or for a portion of the year, or by incident. Like I said, the next person coming up can answer that question.
So, just to clarify, make sure I understand. Currently, we lease, and it appears that we may continue to lease on an annual basis. And the question here is, well, should we... Apparently, I guess the question is, should we continue to lease, or do we purchase? Is that the way you see it?
Yeah, that's the way I see it.
Great. Thank you.
With the cost of $35,000.
Gary Persketti, DPW, Director of Town of Chumsford. Bob, to follow up on what you're saying, one of your statements, of course, was that we've been leasing forever. I agree with you on that. We have been leasing forever, which means we could have bought this machine at least two times by now. Secondly, the current machine we are leasing can only currently lift 24-inch sumps. Based on the requirements for stormwater, we now have to lift 48-inch sumps, which means that I'm going to have to rent a machine that is larger, which ends up being roughly another $1,000 a month, which will add another $10,000 to it, bringing 35 up to 45, which means we'd own the machine in five years. And it has an 18- to 20-year life. I would think that's a more sensible way to go, but that's the board's thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Clancy, Precinct 2. I have a couple of questions for actually either the DPW Director or the Town Finance Director in regards to the midsize excavator. So, my first question is, in that lease for $35,000 per year, what does that include?
That includes the machine on our property for the number of months, usually between 10 and 11, for us to use that machine. It includes us using the machine for the jobs that we need to. What it does not include is, we're responsible for regular maintenance of the machine, and we are also responsible for extended maintenance. You know, at one point in time, we had an issue where we actually ruined a bucket, and it was an extra cost to us that we had to provide, you know, as it. And sometimes, when you bring a machine back, there were fine items that they believe we need to repair. So, that is not the total cost at some points. If you'd like to, I could give you a...
No. In fact, you answer my next two questions.
Okay.
And finally, does our insurance cover any of those costs, repair or damage?
No. We run with a $10,000 deductible, so usually, they're not anywhere near that.
Okay. And you mentioned it was 18 years, 18 to 20 years for a life of a new midsize excavator?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any estimated maintenance costs for that?
Sure. What I could tell you about that is, basically, we estimate that our costs would run between $700 and $1,000 a year. And one of the reasons for that is, we do most of our own maintenance with our own staff when it comes to stuff like that. And then, of course, I'm not going to tell you stories. If we were to ruin our own bucket, we're going to have to replace it, just like we would, you know, for the vendor when we did.
So, if we assume the 18-year life for the midsize excavator, do you have a breakdown of what that would be per year, on the cost per year? If you take the life of the purchase...
I did not do that. The only thing I did was break... Broke it down into the cost for the rental of five years. But I'd imagine if you broke it down, you know, $228 into 18, you're probably...
About $12,697.39 per year.
$13,000, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Chris Garahan, Precinct 8. Question, basically, again, looking at the financial analysis of the... For the excavator, I'd like to have some more information as far as, again, taking into account the life of the excavator and comparing the lease cost versus ownership. Do we have a calculation, basically, on the break-even point of lease versus purchase, and what's most advantageous to the town from a fiscal perspective?
Okay. Maybe Mr. Souza can answer that?
Based on information provided by the Director of Public Works, the cost that's in the capital sheets in the book lists... in the capital sheets in the book lists thirty-five thousand. What that did not take into account is what the DPW Director said earlier about what the new regulations, he's going to have to rent a larger machine. He usually rents it for, the additional cost would be a thousand dollars per month for about ten months out of the year. So, depending on how you do it, a very simple analysis, financial analysis technique is often, you look at payback. So, you take the two-twenty-eight, if you want to be conservative and divide it by the thirty-five thousand, you're going to get payback in about six-point-three years. Based on the information of us having to rent a larger machine at a cost of forty-five thousand, you're going to reach payback in year five. And then, all of the years, the DPW Director has also indicated that the expected useful life of this midsize excavator is eighteen to twenty years. So, based on what I heard, starting in year six, in year five, we basically paid for the machine. Going from year six through eighteen, the town saves forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Thank you, sir. Question, second question on the school technology. My question is, is if school technology...
Well, we're not on school technology yet. We're just on the excavator and the truck.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I guess this is for the DPW Director. How many vehicles do we have? We have a motor pool. How many vehicles do we have like this?
How many excavators?
Yeah. Just this one leased one?
Yes, we have no other excavator of that size, none.
And we use this thing every day for ten months?
Roughly, yes.
Like eight hours a day?
I'm not going to say eight hours a day, but it's used most of the ten months, probably a good four out of five days a week at minimum. I mean, the machine is used for all drainage work. It's used for all side work, work that takes place.
Okay. And there's hours on trucks. We've always discussed that. It's not the number of years that a truck is rated at, it's the number of hours. How many hours did we put on this thing last year?
On what?
On the excavator that we leased.
I don't know. I did not look at that number at all.
That's an important number to do.
I leased it, so I have not looked at it, no.
Do the towns around us, do they also have excavators? Westford and Andover and all the towns we always compare ourselves to?
I'm not sure how that's relevant to the discussion as to whether or not we're going to lease this type of piece of equipment until the town decides to buy it if they ever do, or whether we're going to buy it. So, I'm not, I'm going to say that that question's out of order as to what other towns do.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Is leasing versus buying vehicles what other towns do?
Again, that's the same question. I think that the financial analysis, which is germane to this issue, is what we should be focusing on.
Not the number of hours that the vehicles use, the number of people that are certified to drive it?
Well, we've already gotten, we've already been told that we lease it at an X amount of dollars per year, and how much, how many years we're going to be leasing it, and whether we buy it, and how many months it's going to take to pay it back. So, let's not talk about hours. Let's talk about on whether or not you want to take this out of capital budget, is really the question.
Okay. The towns talked about regionalization. Could we, if we buy this thing, could we, when we're not using it on the weekends or in the winter, could we use it? Could we use it? Could the other towns around us maybe borrow it for a fee?
I don't know of any town that would like to. I'd imagine it's something that can be looked at. But then again, now you have who's responsible for repairs if something happens to the machine. So, it'd be like anything else, it'd have to be something that's looked into.
Okay. And if we have, we had a sewer break or a break over on North Road, we used only our vehicle, or did we have to go out and rent a vehicle for a special project?
On probably a good ninety-five percent of all breaks that we have in this town, we usually have the equipment to do it. On a few sewer breaks where they are really down in the ground, we do not. And we do have to go out and get a private company to come help us with that. But it's not the majority, it's the minority.
And that's not cost-effective to have somebody else come into town to help us?
No, not every time you have to do it, no.
We need to own all the equipment. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Andy Silings, Precinct Seven. A very simple question. Does the wagon that would carry this excavator, do we own it, or does that come in that price? Or do we have to buy a bigger one because we're buying a bigger machine?
They deliver it with their, and then what we do is, when we need to move it from place to place, we move it on ours, which is large enough to move all of our machinery.
And that's large enough to...
Oh, without a doubt.
Move the bigger one to?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Bill Griffin, Precinct Nine, through you to the prior speaker and to Mr. Sousa. Apologize. A couple of questions about the machinery. If purchased new, what's the warranty period on the device? So that you're working on projects, do we get coverage within the first couple of years for things like bucket damage, blown hydraulics, engine issues, things of that nature?
Off the top, I can't tell you exactly. I have not looked at purchasing one because this body has not voted for that at this point in time. I can't say what it is. When you're talking about a commercial piece of equipment like that, it differs a lot as it does, you know, something that's used by a homeowner, as far as how long they'll do for warranty. The average, I would say, on a piece of equipment like that would be one year for the labor part, and then it depends on certain parts. Some are always warranted longer than others, depending on what they are. But we would, that would be investigated along with the fact that everything we buy is done on state bid.
Two last questions, Mr. Moderator. In terms of the warranty or afterwards, in terms of replacement, because you'd more than likely be buying a specific brand, you'd be limited to that dealer's, you'd be captive to that dealer's equipment for things like the buckets and hydraulics, yes?
To a point, but at the same time, as I said, we buy off a state bid list because we're a municipality, so our rates are quite favorable along with the vehicles we buy.
Okay. Last question is this. I heard a statement a few minutes ago that years six through eighteen would be basically at no cost. I find that interesting, owning an older vehicle, that each year, my maintenance costs go up as my vehicle wears out. So, I don't understand how that can be a zero cost through years through six or eighteen.
No, I, just to correct you, I believe that what they said was that the payback on the investment after year six, they paid back. They're not talking about maintenance, they're talking about the cost.
I heard that the savings would be forty-five thousand dollars a year for years six through eighteen.
Well, well...
And if you take into account maintenance and increased warranty on the vehicle, that would be inaccurate, because you will be paying cost into that vehicle.
Laura Merrill, Precinct Two. My question is, how long has it been known about this new regulation? When this was presented to the Board of Selectmen two weeks ago, we were given the thirty-five-thousand-dollar amount as the current lease price. Now, all of a sudden, I'm hearing it's a different amount because there's an amendment up.
Stormwater regulations are still in the process of being a hundred percent voted on, but that is, New Hamptons are already out. Massachusetts are going to probably follow, almost to the T, what they are. And because of what's happening to the systems, these are the requirements coming forward, which means that if we continue to put in the smaller ones, we're going to have an issue as we go on. And we don't want to be doing that. It all has to do with the new stormwater regulations, which in about a year are going to, we're going to have a lot to talk about.
So, by that same token, in ten years from now, would it be possible that this new truck would not meet the new regulations?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you that. I would say no, just off the top, because I believe that this is to help, you know, divert the water off the roads and into the drains quicker so that the systems run better. I can't see you getting much bigger than that. And secondly, the only thing I could say is what anyone would say, then you would probably end up trading it in towards something bigger, if that was the need at that point. But we don't know that, and we won't know that.
Okay. Just one last, so presumably, we are leasing a newer vehicle, or what is the age of the vehicle that we are leasing now?
It's three years. I think this is our third year with that one.
So, would we...
So, we return them after a certain point, and then they give us another new one, and we continue with it for a few years, and then they resell what...
So, presumably, the maintenance costs on this leased vehicle would be comparable to the new vehicle, but only for the first few years. Then, any purchased vehicle would have higher maintenance costs, whereas the leased vehicle would still be running as a new unit over the years. So, the maintenance of a lease cost, lease maintenance is less over time.
Well, not necessarily, because, again, we're responsible for anything that happens to the machine.
Understandably, but we're responsible for anything that happens to the machine, whether we lease it or purchase it. So, is that argument really make much difference?
Mm-hmm. Nope.
Thank you.
Carol Kelly, Celestica, Precinct Five. This is for the presenter of the amendment. If we take two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars away, and it costs us forty-five thousand dollars to lease it, you have not provided any money for the leasing now.
No, that's already in the budget, I presume, because they lease it every year.
But it's not in the coming budget. If you're taking everything away...
No, no, no. I presume that the budget we passed today or the other day has it in there already. I mean, that would be a question for DPW.
In the Public Works budget under Highway, under Machinery... Yeah, I don't think it's broken out. Yeah. The DPW budget was reduced by, I believe, just on one line for five thousand, but that wouldn't cover this. The issue is that if you remove this from the capital plan, at the time, we didn't reduce the budget because we didn't know if it was going to be approved. So, there is a cost. I mean, you would have to, you know, if we're going to go with a larger machine, you would have to most likely amend the Highway budget at some point to cover the larger machine.
Okay. So, if his amendment were to be approved, you do have some money of the forty-five thousand that you need? Okay, thank you.
Richard Grove, Precinct Three. Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Well, this is technically question and answer, but I do want people to have an opportunity to ask, and so, well, if there's one person behind you, and we'll see. I'll defer on that for the moment, or maybe two. Go ahead.
This is Kathy Duffett, Precinct Seven. As a switch, I'll be brief. What is the, what is the cost differential to the town on an annual basis if you borrow two-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars versus the original proposal?
You mean two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand?
Right. No, no, no. Two...
Oh, two million?
I was looking at the bottom line. What is the cost differential between the original proposed amount of borrowing for capital versus what it would cost if, at the reduced amount per annum? What would the difference be?
Mr. Moderator, answer the speaker's question. What we usually do on a departmental equipment is we borrow over a five-year term, unless it's some unusual vehicle, such as a fire truck or something of that nature. So, you would take one, you'd take the two-twenty-eight figure, divide by five, also add a small factor for interest, throw out a number of roughly three percent. So, take the two-twenty-eight, divide by five, and add on an interest figure. And that would be, that would be one year's debt service in the budget.
Did that satisfy your question?
I think so, but I just wanted to point out it's a small amount of money.
Deputy Attorney, Precinct Six. I want to know specifically, if you put, what do you use this evacuate, what is it used for? Is it for, is it for the water department, the sewer department? Is it to build sidewalks? What do you really use it for?
DPW, it's mainly used daily for drainage and sidewalk repair, and new sidewalks installed. Repair, new sidewalks, and drainage.
So, it's primarily just for the sidewalks?
No, and drainage for sewerage.
All right.
And streets.
So, the sewer department is using this also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. There being no further questions, now's the time... Yes, go ahead. Do you have some numbers?
A rough ballpark estimate is about forty-seven thousand eighty-three dollars in the debt service budget.
Okay. Is there any discussion on, and we're only talking about the excavator and the pickup truck?
Oh, no, we haven't talked about the pickup truck.
Well, the pickup truck...
We haven't voted separately.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, but we were dealing with those both as far as questions and answers as one. We're going to vote on them separately.
I don't think so, because nobody asked about the pickup truck.
Okay, okay, well, we'll deal with this one first, then. I may have misunderstood. So, we're voting on the amendment to remove the Midsize Excavator Public Works, which would reduce the capital budget by two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars?
You've only had questions.
Well, I asked if there was any discussion, and I didn't hear, see anybody come up. So, is there discussion?
Sorry, well, then I...
No, if there's discussion, I certainly don't want to terminate discussion.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry. Are we going to get recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen?
Well, they didn't have, the Finance Committee didn't have a, they're not in session now, I don't believe. And I'll ask them, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this issue?
Finance Committee has no recommendation on this amendment.
And has the Board of Selectmen voted on this?
We won't make a recommendation.
All right, very good.
Okay.
On the amendment.
So, is there discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I did not hear you, Mr. Moderator, I apologize. That's what happens when you get old. Yes, Sam Chase, Precinct One. I appreciate the efforts of the presenter to try to save the town some money. The fact of the matter is that we've heard from the Department of DPW Director that we are currently leasing this machine. So, we already have an annual expense, and it's a lease expense. And it's thirty-five thousand dollars a year into the foreseeable future. Maybe the lease will go up, maybe it won't, who knows? And actually, it'll be more money now that we've learned because it's going to be a larger machine. But if you take the original thirty-five thousand dollar a year number, and you extract that out over the life, or the potential life of the machine that we're going to buy, which we have been told is eighteen to twenty years, and we just take the conservative number for eighteen years, you're going to have a total lease expense of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars over the eighteen-year period. If we buy the machine, and you've heard Mr. Sousa tell us that it's a five-year payback, you use the level declining principal form of payment, so that means you pay back twenty percent of your principal every year. It's not a declining situation like it is for your mortgage, okay? So, using that situation, we've paid back the machine in a little over six years, and the total cost is approximately two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. All right? I've done the math, okay? And I've assumed the current interest rate, which I've gotten from Mr. Sousa. So, over an eighteen-year period, you've actually cost the town three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars, lease versus purchase. Now, you certainly have the maintenance costs and everything else apart from the lease cost and the purchase cost, but you're going to have those either way. You're going to have them with a leased machine, you're going to have them with a purchased machine, and so, we won't talk about those. But it certainly isn't anything that would overcome the additional cost to the taxpayer. Now, in the first six years of payback of the machine, because you have to pay back in... of payback of the machine, because you have to pay back interest the first year, and then the next years, you pay back the principal on a declining basis, plus interest. In the first six years of payback, if you buy the machine as opposed to leasing the machine, the tax impact to the average single resident in the town would be 43 cents a year. That's what you're saving in the first six years, okay? Starting in the seventh year, we own the machine, you continue to pay the lease, and that's going to cost the average taxpayer $2.45 a year. So in actuality, Mr. Moderator, if we lease the machine and don't buy it, it's going to cost us more money. So I would urge this body to defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. I agree completely with the previous speaker, although the numbers are interesting. You've got, you've got a simple choice here. You can either spend the 35 or maybe $45,000 a year versus the, according to the new numbers that Sam just gave, approximately $14,000 a year cost if we stretched it over the entire 18 years. Just simple math, 14,000 times 18 years is the, is the amortized cost spread out with interest rates. So I could pay essentially $14,000 if I spread it over 18 years, or I could pay $35,000 a year for 18 years, or $45,000 a year for 18 years. But either way you do the math, $14,000 is less than 35. $14,000 is less than 45. So if you buy the machine, over the long-term, more than five years, you save the town money. And I think the intent of this was to save the town money, although this is an instant savings, it's a long-term expense. So I would vote against this.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. Are we in debate?
Yes.
Yes.
There was some, there was a term-use discussion, and that's not in our charter, from what I could see. So I was, that's part of the confusion. Mike, I'm looking at, at this machine, and I saw very few sidewalks built during the winter time. We had pretty big winter. I don't know how often the machine is used in terms of hours. And my concern about how other towns use it is certainly relevant to the discussion as to whether we ought to buy a machine, incur the liability of, of keeping the maintenance up, hiring an expert in it, having the right hoses in our maintenance garage, maybe making a bigger maintenance garage for the different vehicles that we might decide we need over the next few years. Leasing machines of this nature, or renting one when you need it, or, talking about regionalization, put it into a motor pool with Lowell and Andover and Westford. There's three other communities that obviously could use the same type of equipment, and we keep thinking that Chelmsford's all by itself here, and we got to buy everything. Well, folks, we can't buy everything. I lived in a town with three helicopters in California. We don't need a helicopter here, but by God, if we decided that we like to fly the police over it instead of using a drone or something like that, we'd have to buy one at least when we start talking the math. I'd like to look at the math in terms of the hours of use for the vehicle that we're trying to buy. And right now, leasing it seems to be a good idea. And I suggest if we are leasing it or renting it, we do it during the summer months when we're building sidewalks and doing the storm drains and otherwise working on roads. And then we turn it in like we do the police motorcycle. We don't keep it during the winter, because that will cut half the cost out of that lease, or maybe something a little less than that. There are ways to get around it, and there are other methods used. We're not Southern California, doing this work 24/7/365. We're a pretty little town, and we can't afford all the equipment. Next town meeting, I'd love to see the size of our motor pool, how many people are driving the trucks, and maybe we can save some other money in, in terms of the kind and type of vehicles. We might need new ones. This one, I think, we can't afford right now. Thanks.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four. I've got one question, and it's regarding the size of this. This says midsize. Is this the same size that we're leasing currently? Because there was some discussion about sometimes you need a larger one, you might need a larger one for new storm drain regulations. Is this going to help us in the future with these storm drain regulations? Are we going to have to come back and lease a bigger one or buy a bigger one?
No, if we were to buy this, it would be one size up from the one we are renting now, which would be able to do it.
So this is a bigger, stronger, better thing than we're leasing right now?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to just say a couple of words.
No, no, you're out of order unless you want to get to the microphone. I mean, you're the proponent.
Yeah, but as a proponent, I can respond, I can respond from here.
You know, the purpose was for discussion, and I think you've had a, go ahead.
I'd like to move the question, please.
Okay, that's a priority motion. It was a priority motion. Mr. Joyce? Okay, we have a priority motion, which is a motion to move the article.
Point of order?
Yes.
A town meeting rep had walked up to a microphone and was speaking, and you let someone come up and move the question. That is inappropriate.
He wasn't at a microphone. He's not at a microphone. He's right there.
He was at a microphone. He was, he was on the floor in order.
The motion before us is to move the article.
Mr. Moderator?
Mister, you're out of order.
Mr. Moderator, I challenge the moderator.
Well, I'm sorry you can't. Now, the issue is whether or not the, this board, now, Miss, Miss, Mr. Latina, hold on. Mr. Latina, if in fact Town Meeting wants to continue discussion, Mr. Joyce certainly would have the right to discuss it. But we have a pending, it's what called a priority motion, to move the article, and we're going to vote on that.
May I have a point of order?
You've already had a point of order. What's your point of order, sir?
I ask to challenge the moderator, which is a Town Meeting allowed challenge.
So, so Town Council?
And you can ask the attorney.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The moderator's ruling is not subject to challenge by Town Meeting.
So right now, the issue before us is, and I don't know if we, if we, can we do it on the, on the screen? I would like to. The motion is to move the question. So an affirmative vote is to terminate discussion and then address the amendment. So an affirmative vote is to terminate debate, and then the next vote will be on the amendment.
Maybe there's a whole bunch of new Town Meeting reps out there who don't know what moving the question means, but it's a pretty standard procedure to terminate, stop debating, and move on to the vote. Requires a two-thirds majority, which it looks like it has.
Okay, the vote is 95 to move the question. Forty-one opposed, three abstentions. So now the next vote is whether or not to approve the amendment. This amendment only deals with the midsize excavator, and if you vote in the affirmative, we will be reducing the capital budget by $228,553.
One of the points that was kind of lost in all of those numbers is made by John Souza, which is, we would not pay the 200, if we buy this vehicle, we would not pay the 228,000 all at once. We would amortize it over about five years, which comes out to, as he stated, about 47,000 a year, versus the 45,000 that we would probably lease. So I just fail to see the compelling argument for not buying.
Final vote is 24 in favor, 113 opposed to abstentions. So we will now get to Amendment Number Two, which is the pickup truck. Mr. Proponent, Mr. Joyce?
Yes, I spoke earlier about this. I don't think we should be spending frugal funds here on classic trucks. And it bothers me that the Capital Planning Committee, and for that matter, the DPW Director, doesn't know what the hours on machines are. And I think that would be a question that they would ask about every single machine in the town when they go to replace it. How many hours are on it, and how many, how much mileage is on it? So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Question and answer for the proponent?
Sure. Sorry, Gary Purse, KETI, DPW Director. Bob, to answer some of your questions for starters, the truck is a 2001, 14-years-old. This truck has already been repurposed. Approximately two and a half to three years ago, we had a facilities truck that did not pass inspection, needed over $4,000 worth of work. I went to the town manager, and we had a sewer truck coming offline to be sold in the auction. That was in better shape. We repurposed that truck to this division for two and a half years now. It has 90,000 miles on it, the transmission slips, it has bad ball joints in it, and it needs some motor work as well right now. This truck has been plowing for this town for 14 years. It's not just mileage. You want to talk about hours, we can certainly talk about how many hours this thing's been plowing. It's been plowing every storm for 14 years in all these winters that we have. And you can't compare that to a truck that's used at a home or that doesn't plow.
Do you have a number of hours it's run?
Oh, gosh. I mean, I would have to say you run an average of about eight to 10 hours a storm.
No good. Not a good answer.
What do you mean, not a good answer?
You're guessing. You're guessing.
Okay, Mr. Joyce, you're now, you're now in debate as opposed to answering a que, he's, he's asking you a question, and...
I asked him a question, and he answered, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Purse, KETI.
I'm telling you that the truck has already been repurposed, which I believe I did tell you before. And, and, you know, you're welcome anytime to come down, take a look. I would have loved to call and have a conversation about this, but I guess it's better now, yeah.
With all due respect, it's question and answer. Do you have any questions for the proponent? Does anyone? Okay, now we're in debate. Does anyone wish to engage in debate? Discussion?
Chris Garahin, Precinct Eight. Again, I would vote this down. I mean, it's 14-years-old. It's got an awful lot of miles on it, and it just seems like the common sense thing is, is to proceed with the capital expense. Thank you.
Hold on. Whoever gets to the microphone first.
Idea, I'm not, I'm not. Maria Caro, Fellas, Precinct Two. Gary, this may be a question for you. I know it's replacing another vehicle. I'm trying to think of what my question was. Oh, my gosh. The repair work on the transmission and the other engine work, and the work that needs to be done to bring that vehicle up to inspectable condition, is how much money? And then I got a following question after that.
I would say it's approximately 38,000, 3,800, excuse me.
Okay. Now, if you do the transmission work and the engine work and all that, given the vehicle already has 90,000 miles on it, how much, how many more miles do you think you're going to get? What's the end of life for that vehicle? For the money that you're going to put into it, how much more mileage you're going to get out of it?
Actually, there's a twofold part to this. Number one, I think a picture was shown, and we could probably get it back up there. The body's in quite rough shape. As I said, the vehicle's been repurposed twice. It's had a very hard life, which is very standard in our world, based on the fact that we, you know, do all our plowing. And, you know, without the vehicle, as far as the facilities department go, that would give them one less vehicle to plow it next year if it had a failure and we did not purchase something.
Okay. The other question is, this seems really kind of crazy. What kind of vehicle are you purchasing? Is it a Ford, a Chevy, an F-250, a 2500? Which one? Yeah.
We usually, we usually purchase 2500 series with plows. I cannot tell you to make, because as again, we're on state bid list. We'll go to Ford, we'll go to Chevy.
Okay.
We'll price them both.
So can I go through you to buy me a new truck?
I wish I could.
That's a good price.
I wish I could get one myself.
That's a very good price. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes, Bob Joyce, Precinct One. I'm a little dismayed because of the previous vote, but this vote is just as important. And I just don't know where we need to go to save the taxpayers in this town some money. It appears the Town Meeting doesn't want to save money, because this is a, it was a brand-new piece in the last article.
Mr. Joyce, please, please do not disparage Town Meeting.
I'm not disparaging.
No, you are. You are. When you say that Town Meeting doesn't...
Well, that's your opinion.
So, so just discuss the issue, okay?
Okay.
And you can make your point without disparaging anyone.
Okay. Well, I just don't know where we can go now that we've got our backs against the wall and nobody wants to cut anything. Thank you.
Any more discussion? There being none. We're going to be voting on whether or not to delete $42,600 for a pickup truck for the public facilities from... A no is not to, is to not remove that from the capital budget.
Oh, yes.
A yes vote is to remove it from the capital budget. Final vote is 14 yes, 126 no, one abstention. So the amendment fails. There's one more amendment that the proponent has. Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Moderator, this article or amendment was submitted to delete interactive whiteboards and projectors from the school budget, or the school part of the capital budget, for $150,000. I don't know how long we've been spending this money, but it's time to stop. I'm told there's six more years of this. So these things are almost out of date at this point. I've worked in, in the commercial field, and these, these are out of date. There's better things coming. And I just think we need to put the brakes on, on this $150,000, reevaluate for next year, and see what we want to do. There's a lot of schools out there, and there's a lot of schools that don't have interactive boards in every single classroom. I'm even told there are teachers within this school system that don't want to use them. So with that in mind, I'd like you to vote in favor of cutting $150,000 on this item.
Are you, are you, thank you. Now's the time for question and answers of the proponent.
Frank Tiano, One Spruce Street, Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Moderator, question through you to the presenter. Mr. Joyce, were you part of the IT Governance Committee? That's a joint meeting between, joint committee?
Yes, I was. I was on that committee one year.
And what year was that?
Paul, help me. I don't know. I don't remember.
Not this year.
13? It was either 12 or 13.
So as, as part of that committee, when we vote capital, we have the school committee, the selectmen, the finance committee, the capital planning committee, as well as for the technology department for both the town and the schools, has an IT Governance Committee that is now called the IT Capital Committee, that includes administration from the school and the town, as well as experts from the community. And as they approve this, as they approve this capital, you asked the question, how many more years do we have? We started with the interactive whiteboards in 2009. When Ms. Fiori came on board in 2010, we provided the infrastructure for these to really take off. Expected termination of this project is 2019. As part of that committee...
Mr. Tiano, Dr. Tiano, with all due respect, if you have a question, what you're saying is argument, okay? Have questions?
Did you, did you vote to propose these, this project?
Well, I think if it was an 11 or 12, or 13, it's irrelevant what I voted for. I'm talking about now.
Okay.
It's gone on too long.
And my question...
I don't recall really to be answered.
And I guess my question for you is, as part of a long-term project, you mentioned that other school districts do not use this technology. Could you please tell me which ones?
No, I can't at this point. But I know that there are schools that don't have 100% coverage.
Okay.
And...
And in terms of, in terms of stopping this project, do you understand the instructional impact that this would have?
Yes, I don't think there is an instructional impact, because half of your teachers who aren't telling you are not using them. aren't telling you are not using them. Or, or better than that.
I'll wait for debate for that portion.
Very good.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Garrahan?
Yes, Chris Garrahan, Precinct 8. A question basically with respect to this classroom technology. And my question is, and it is, you know, basically, what is the long-term plan for this technology? And, and in the competitive environment that we have, as far as our school system and other local school systems, you know, where do we stand with this technology? Are we competitive? Are we behind? You know, what's going on is my question.
If there's someone who can respond to the question?
Actually...
Thank you.
I think Frank could now respond to that.
Go ahead. She can go there, she can go right to that same microphone.
The long-range plan is to finish all the schools. When I first came to Chelmsford, this was part of an existing capital plan, and we've just been trying to finish it. We take it very seriously in terms of mapping out every single room, and when teachers take and pass the course, which provides them the pedagogy for the, using this equipment, called Universal Design for Learning, when they take and pass the course, then they get the equipment the next summer. We have 321 rooms completed and about 425 rooms total. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, quick point of order, just to remind the folks that might be watching at home, maybe you should be identifying yourself at the microphone.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're correct. That was Emery Fiori, the IT person, Director of the Public Schools. Go ahead.
Christopher Levalle, Tan Edgewood Street. I'm fairly new to the town, so I do have a question. The, the whiteboards are part of the 21st Century Classroom project. It, based on what I read in the, the project details, it says that the, the project is geared towards pre-K through 12, correct? Okay. And what is the total cost of the, the project over the span of the, all of the years?
If someone has an answer for the questioner?
We've been funding this at $75,000 a year for the past six years.
Yeah, what's the total?
But what, what, what is the, I guess the question is, what is the anticipated total over the course of completing the project? If, if you, if you can, if you can even determine that.
Mr. Moderator, answer that question. If you take the previous six years, it's, the project's been funded at $75,000 a year, so that's about $450,000. If you look on page H42 of the Town Budget Manual in the capital section, it's planned to be funded $150,000 for '16 out through '19, as the school technology director indicated to finish the project. So that's $600,000 between fiscal year '16 and '19. So I'm coming out with about $1,050,000 over that total time span.
Thank you.
And my two last questions. This is designed to put projectors, speakers, and whiteboards in every single classroom, correct? Okay. And lastly, are, at this point in the project, are there any statistics or measurements as to how much they're being used, or what, what teachers are doing with them?
In terms of the...
Identify yourself, please.
I'm so sorry. Frank Tiano, One Spruce Street, Chelmsford, Superintendent of Schools. As, as Ms. Fiori had mentioned previously, unlike other districts, when they put in technology such as this, for example, with a new school, the equipment comes before the training. What we have done is have, having to implement this over a series of years, we have utilized a course, it's a three-credit graduate course that staff can take for graduate credits, or they can take for professional development points. We have staff that sign up for this course one year, two years, three years in advance. Once they've completed this training, then they're eligible for the technology in their classroom. So what that means is, when the equipment's installed over the summer, the teacher coming in is not only capable of using it, they are eager to use it. When we had a meeting here in this room a few weeks ago, and it's come, it's come across a variety of different venues, in terms of 50% of the teachers are not using it, nobody's using it, and so forth, we try to ascertain in terms of, in terms of statistics. What we've asked recently for all of our administrators, from our principals to our department coordinators, who run the professional development, who are in the classrooms, and we asked our principals last week and all of our administrators to go through each and every one of our class, this technology is being used daily, daily. That's not what you're hearing, however, that is what's happening in our schools for the people who work in them daily. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
Jerry Mead, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the superintendent or to a member of the school committee. I'm curious to know what determines whether an item like the whiteboards is a capital item or a part of the regular school budget?
Mr. Souza?
Under the town's financial policies and capital planning principles, an item must have an estimated life of over five years and be over $25,000. So that's what we define this as capital, due to the cost and the estimated useful life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly Barrett, Precinct 5. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever can answer the question. I'm just curious how many whiteboards $150,000 buys.
And just again, introduce yourself, thank you.
Anne Marie Fiori, Executive Director of Technology and Information. We're on a cusp year now. This is the first year where we're actually going to get about 45 to 50 rooms done, because rooms are different sizes in the school department. So for instance, a reading room may not, the physical room may not support each part of the technology, which is interactive whiteboard, ceiling-mounted projector, and ceiling-mounted speakers. In a small room, you might not need the speakers. We've been keeping track of all the rooms that we've done. The PTOs and the principals have worked together to get a lot of the projectors already hung. So this, this year will be 46 to 50 rooms. We, we monitor the cost of these, of this equipment all the time to make sure that we're getting the best price on the equipment, and I hope that answers your question, Beverly.
It does, thank you.
Laura Merrill, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, to whoever can answer my questions. First of all, just clarify who is paying for the training for these? Do the teachers pay for this themselves, or is this financed by the school system?
Okay, please introduce yourself, thank you.
Lynda Hirsch, 40 School Street, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. What happens with the training, it's a little odd that you're not in front of me, sorry. It's, what happens with the training is, it's through our Title II-A grant, which is Teacher Quality Grant. It goes towards professional development, and what we do is, we have a contract with Fitchburg State University to offer the course. I'm one of the instructors, and our teachers can then get the professional development points, which is free, or if they want to pay the additional costs to the university, oh, sorry, if they want to pay the additional costs to the university, they could then have their graduate credit, which would then be applied to their degree program or towards their, their master's plus.
Thank you. Thank you. My next question is, I've, I've been coming to town meeting now for four years, and I guess I didn't realize that this was a 10-plus-year program. We've been putting these in the schools for the last six years. How many of these existing systems are currently functioning? Do we have any maintenance costs, or is any of the technology now outdated from the, the initial installations that these need to be looked at as well?
Anne Marie Fiori, Chelmsford Public Schools. The, the technology that goes with this 21st Century Classroom has changed very little. The only maintenance really that we do is, we have in-house technicians that vacuum the projectors out every summer, and the bulbs, which we pay for on the, on the, out of operations. Again, the technology's changed very little, and we're right on target where we should be.
It's changed a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Salmon, Precinct 2. So I guess one of my question was, and I don't know if it's already been answered or not, Mr. Moderator, how many people have already signed up for this so far, for this next three, four, you said 2019, so do we have numbers that we're looking at in terms to fill these 45 to 50 spots each year, or do we not know yet?
Lynda Hirsch, 40 School Street, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. I don't have the full numbers for you, but currently, this past summer, we had 20 students, 20 teachers in the class, and then we also run what's called a multi-part series during professional development days, where teachers can sign up during their professional development days to take the course. Again, I'm one of the instructors of that course, so those teachers signed up when we had approximately 15 teachers in that course that just was completed in April.
Thank you.
So just a follow-up question to that, I guess, then. So if that's about 35, and we're going to pay for about 42 or 46, whatever it was, what do we do with those extra ones that we have?
It's not extra, because what ends up happening is that the teachers take the course or the multi-part series, and they don't receive the technologies until the following school year, so the following summer. So they'll take the course in the summer, and then the following summer, they'll have that, the equipment installed. So this is for the current teachers, and then we will have another set of teachers taking the course this summer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anita Tanini, Precinct 4. Can you tell me what the average cost to install these whiteboards, including the full kit and caboodle is per classroom?
Anne Marie Fiori, Chelmsford Public Schools. The cost of one classroom is $5,000.
So you're saying that the technology won't change in 10 years, and we all, that this is going to be what's, we, our kids need in 10 years?
Anne Marie Fiori, Chelmsford Public Schools. The tech, what I said was, the technology has remained stable since 2009 till right now. There's no I-follow articles, future technologies, there's no change in this equipment anticipated.
Then why doesn't Harvard University have them in every classroom and plan to put them into every classroom?
That's, that's not an appropriate question. She wouldn't, and nobody...
I can wait for debate for that.
Well, you can, but I don't, you know, you're asking a question that I don't think anybody in the room is, is capable of responding to.
Laura Merrill, Precinct 2. Just thought of one last question. Regarding the teachers that are signing up for this, is there any demographics in terms of our newer teachers versus teachers that have been in the system for 20, 30 years? Is there any difference in the amount of students you're getting in one area versus
Lynda Hirsch, 40 School Street, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. So currently, what ends up happening was, we have a variety of teachers that take it, so it's K through 12, because what ends up happening in the course is that it's geared towards your content area, whether you're a music teacher, whether you're a history teacher. So what ends up happening is, we found that a lot of teachers at the K6 and then middle school took the class, and now we're trying to move that a little bit forward for any of our high school teachers, and then any of our new teachers are always welcome to take the course.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. Question for the moderator, and, and you can direct it where, where it needs to go. I'd like to understand the amendment in, in the whole realm of this, and I've got a couple of questions to just kind of put it in focus. I'm looking at the slides that show the capital funding history, and it seems to just creep up a little bit, and a little bit, and a little bit each year. And then I look at the slide that has the projected capital budget over the next years, 2017 to '20, and that bumps up a whole lot. And I seem to remember that we kind of saw the same thing last year.
Ms. Arroway, do you have a question, or are you just making an argument beforehand?
I do. No, I, I really do have a question.
Okay, let's hear it.
But in order to understand that question, I need to ask another question.
Well, why don't you ask the question, and then if we're confused, you can extrapolate.
So I'm looking at the 2017 budget, and I'm wondering, what all are the significant expenses that are projected into '17 that we thought could roll out from '16 and be deferred?
Okay, Mr. Souza, or, or Mr. Cohen, I don't...
Mr. Moderator, answer the previous speaker's question. The, the slide that we had up there that showed the, the $4 million per year for the next four years, those are requests. It doesn't necessarily mean all of those projects were funded. In fact, with the, with the bond capacity we have, and that, it's not our intent to try to fund $4 million a year. It's to show that those needs are legitimate needs, and they're out there. If you go, if, if the representatives wish to learn more, if you go to pages H12, let's H12 through H19, you can see all of the projects that are listed for the out of year by department. So if someone wanted to learn, gain a little more knowledge on what makes up the $4 million, you can see all of those projects listed by year.
So does that mean that we, we recognize needs, and then we kind of set a value that we're targeting for, and we pick our priorities against that target budget?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Under the town charter, the town manager's responsible for presenting and operating a capital budget, and again, I get the guidance from the capital plan committee. Our target has been around $3 million. And as, as he noted earlier, some years, in recent years, you know, we, we will get turnbacks right there, that you can see, that, that allows us to, to, in some cases, go a little bit above that, but our net goal is to borrow no more than $3 million per year, and that's, and that, that funding level has been in place now for the last four fiscal years, and that goes back to the development of the capital plan, I'm sorry, the master plan of the community that also talked about stepping up our capital investment, which is why keeping it on the chart in terms of a regular percentage of the town's operating budget.
So you've got a little bit, about 2.5% to 3% growth rate each year, and Mr. Joyce is pushing to get that flat instead of having a growth rate this year. So my question for Mr. Joyce then is, for this amendment, is this about cutting the video equipment for the school, or is it about making a choice on what is the least priority item that we could cut out of this budget to keep it a level budget?
Well, the intent was that if the prior, the prior two amendments had, had passed, and this one, we could get it down to about, I think it was 2.6 million off the top of my head, which would bring us down a little, and then maybe next year, send the message that we want that number instead of the 3 million number. Now, the thing, the recommendation from the plastic master plan committee was just a recommendation. It certainly, and I voted for the master plan committee, but I didn't, I didn't agree with all the things that were in it, and this was one of the things that was in it, but as a whole document, I voted for it, so that should...
So, so what you're saying is that this amendment is really about picking the least priority choice to get this to a level budget?
And, and, yeah, and basically sending a message that we want to see smaller budgets, and it's not going to make a whole lot of difference to the, to the taxpayer, but... it's not gonna make a whole lot of difference to the taxpayer, but, you know, if it's $3, then it makes a difference. But I just think we gotta, we gotta do something. And while the manager is the person that submits this, he's also telling us at the same time our backs are against the wall. So this is a place, this is a place where we could, where we could do something and not lay off people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Kruglack, Precinct 7. I guess my question to the technology people is, in talking to a lot of educators in this school district and outside of the school district, it seems that a lot of interactive whiteboards are very useful in certain subjects, not all, that a lot of teachers use it maybe as a glorified projector that could be just like a simple projector hooked up to a laptop. In other, in other areas, it's used wisely and well. But is it really something, is it a trade-off where technology people kind of like to have the best and latest and greatest of everything? And a lot of teachers are not really utilizing it to its full potential and not necessary in all subjects and maybe not necessary in all classrooms?
Lynda Hirsch, 40 School Street, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. What we said earlier was, in order to have the 21st Century Classroom in your class, you would be taking the coursework that goes around that. So that's that universal design for learning, which is through CAS, which is the Center for Assistive Technologies. So what ends up happening is it's about multiple means of representation, engagement, and expression. So kind of think of it as the what, the how, and the why of learning. So through this technology, the teachers are engaging the students, giving them access to curriculum that they wouldn't naturally be able to do without the whiteboard, without the access to the speaker system, the document cameras. So it basically makes your curriculum become alive. So no one's just getting it to be able to use it as a, just a whiteboard because that would be a waste, but they are actually using it to access curriculum that they wouldn't be able to do, such as say our eighth grade students were able to have some lessons about penguins that were up in the South Pole that they would not have been able to do, obviously, in their classroom in this area.
John Salmon, Precinct 2. Three Marinelle Ave. Just something on my question from before. How does the, how does this work with the $150,000? Is that just given directly to the school and then put into an account? Do they have to purchase all those whiteboards right away with that $150,000, or is it something they tell you how many they need and then they pay for it and then the excess goes somewhere else?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The $150,000 is available. The money's expended at the direction of the, of the school department, you know, school committee. So they may decide to purchase them all over the summer, or they may do some, you know, during winter break or April vacation or whatever. It's really their choice on when to deploy it. What this town meeting is doing is giving them the, the funding authorization to do that purchase.
Okay. And if they say, "We only want 30 at 6,000 a pop," what happens with the-
Then it's, then it's basically authorized but unissued. So then what would happen is, is we could come back at a future town meeting and then, and then put that money elsewhere or eliminate it, basically, to what happens. So that's, that, yeah, they're not, they're not compelled to spend the money.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anne Marie Fiori, Chelmsford Public Schools. We front-load all the work. It's all done during July and August so that when the teachers come back in September, the equipment's ready for them.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Apostolakis, Precinct 9. Just a question about technology. As we know, it changes a lot. So with the white, interactive whiteboard technology, how long has that been around? What is the life expectancy? Is there, if we're gonna invest this money, is there alternatives, more efficient, much better equipment that we could equip the schools with that's possibly upgradable in a few years? You hear about iPads, Apple TV, all that type of thing. So I just wanted to ask the question about looking towards the future. Is this the best course to go ahead and outfit the classrooms with this type of equipment? Is it upgradable a few years?
Mr. Apostolakis, I think most of it has been asked and answered, although I think that your question regarding whether or not this is the best technology that's available has not.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking. Is this old technology?
Let them answer the question, and then if you have a follow-up, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Anne Marie Fiori, Chelmsford Public Schools. The combination of the speakers, the projector, and the interactive whiteboard, the interactive whiteboards have a lifetime guarantee on them, so once they're on the wall, they're there forever. If they, if they do get destroyed or damaged in any way, the company comes back and replaces it. Projectors have had slight upgrades, but we've been keeping up with them, putting the newer ones in the, in the, in the schools. And the speakers are the speakers. Speakers last for many, many, many years, and there's really no, there's no really upgrade on that. We've just, we've examined many different school districts and what they're doing, and this is the standard set of equipment that people get. Also too, if you were to go to Wilmington High School right now, it's brand-new, Methuen High School, they have the same equipment in every one of the rooms that we're retrofitting into older schools.
Dave Dubinsky, Precinct 2. Through the, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker who's behind me. There's a concept in educational pedagogy called NLP, which is neural logistic programming. And what NLP presents, from the teacher's perspective, is addressing the learning, optimal learning capabilities of every individual student. So some students learn orally, some students learn better through the spoken word, and other students learn kinesthetically by doing. So I support any and every effort to bring technology that addresses the broadest variety.
Mr. Dubinsky, this is question and answer, so if you have a question, we will have discussion.
I thought it was debate, I'm sorry.
No, it's question and answer for the moment.
Okay, so I won't repeat myself later.
Okay. Mr. Joyce, do you have a question for someone?
Yeah, I did have a question. Now I can't remember it. I sat, I stood up there so long.
Who's the question, Bob?
Give me a minute. Okay, I'll pass.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we will have debate.
Kathy Duffett-
And let's be mindful of the time. I would really like to finish the capital budget before we leave, so-
Yes, sir. Precinct 7. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the capital committee because they have met over the course of the year numerous times with representatives from the various boards, other citizen volunteers, with feedback from our finance director, and they've done an excellent job, and I want to thank them for their time and their effort. And I'm sure, since they had so many items on their list, that they did not come to this complete list lightly. So thank you for your efforts and thank you for all your work you've done in the past for Chelmsford. Finally, I would like to say that the first time I saw the whiteboards, my daughter was in the fourth grade. She is now a sophomore in college. So I would like to have us come to a conclusion to this project and to continue on the path that we began so long ago. Most of the students really enjoy the technology and the engaging process of our teachers, and I think it is utilized, and even though we keep hearing this common thread, "Oh, oh, teachers don't use it," it is, it's effective, it's wonderful. And what I really wish is that there would be some tours of the high school and the other school system, so on occasion, town meeting reps could go and see what is actually happening in the classroom, and then I think we would feel great about the whole process. So thank you, everyone, for all your hard work.
Ms. Moderator, Bob Joyce, 103 Trump Parker Road. I remembered my question. Having worked in, in the business side or the public side, a lot of companies don't equip every single room in their-
Mr. Joyce, with all due respect, do you have a question?
Discussion. It's discussion. We're in discussion.
Well, you just said you had a question.
I'm gonna ask the question.
Well, let's ask the question, then you can go to discussion. How about that?
The rules for question shouldn't be applied in the discussion part, okay? So anyway-
Go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
I've worked in IT, and most companies don't buy for every single room. And is there any reason why we can't buy like 10 of these things and have them rotate like most companies do when you have a meeting, where you put the whiteboard up?
Okay, let's, let's keep the chatter down, please.
Okay, keep, keep a whiteboard up. It doesn't have to be interactive. And then when a teacher has some kind of a project that they're working on, then they borrow it. They go to the dean's office and they borrow it. Is there any reason why they can't do that?
There's a point of order, go ahead. Yeah, Ms. Dunn, Ms. Dunn, once the presentation has been done and we're in debate, all parties with the debate go to the, go to that microphone.
Carol Kelly Seleski, Precinct 5. So this body will have to decide whether or not they want to spend the $150,000 for these whiteboards. I am tired. I'm offended. I've been listening to this gossip about teachers not using the technology for about five years. I earned my whiteboard. I went to the class. Every day, we use the whiteboard. We may not use all of the technology that the whiteboard affords us every day, but you listen to my kids sing Billy La Bufonda today in class, and they looked at Billy La Bufonda on the whiteboard on the projector. I am offended that you, if you can't give names, if you can't be specific about who's not using their whiteboard that they earned, then you shouldn't be saying that.
George Zaharulis, Precinct 3. I concur with the previous speaker. If you're gonna take away the tools of the teacher, then what do we have? We don't have a school system. Give them the tools to do their job, and this is a tool to do that job. Please defeat this, and let's get on to the rest of the business.
Yes, Chris Garahan, Precinct 8. I support technology in a classroom. I support an interactive classroom where the children have the best opportunity to learn, and, you know, 21st Century Classroom, it's technology, we need to compete against other school districts. We've got to have this, and we need it for the children, so please defeat this amendment.
Thank you.
Christopher Lavalley, 10 Edgewood Street. I am an IT project manager currently. I have managed IT support organizations in higher ed institutions, and I have taught biology classes. My problem is not with the whiteboards themselves. My issue is with the one-size-fits-all approach to this proposal. The universal design for learning that they use in this, in the program, does not mean one-size-fits-all. It means using flexibility and making decisions based on your current class. How do people best use their skills to learn? My recommendation would be to defeat this motion, to, to support this amendment, to remove this line item. There are other ways of achieving technology in classrooms. For instance, one way could be to do a grant-type program where teachers could work with the instructional technologists to come up with ways of using technology in their specific subject matter, in their specific classrooms. Work to implement the technology and then use that, that learning to teach others, other teachers on how to use the technology solutions that they've come up with. That would also, that would also take care of the professional development requirements and credits that they get. So that would be my recommendation, be to support this amendment and rethink the entire program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Reddy, Precinct 1. I'd like to move the question.
Motion to move the question. A vote to, to, to move the question, raise your, do we have it on the, on the computer? A vote yes is to move the question, which would mean that we would go immediately to voting on the amendment.
This is Kelly B. for Chelmsford Telemedia. Looks like we're going to move to the, to the third of Bob Joyce's three amendments. I can tell you that the mood in the senior center is palpably tired and people want to get done with the capital budget and go in.
Vote is 96 yes to move the amendment, 17 opposed. We will now be voting on the amendment itself. A yes vote means that you want to remove from the capital budget a 150,000 item for interactive whiteboards. A vote no means you want it to stay in the capital budget.
And again, it's a sort of a resounding defeat, very one-sided. So now we'll, barring any other amendments, we'll be going to the main capital budget for fiscal 2016.
The vote was 23 in favor, 109 opposed, two abstentions, the amendment fails. We now go to Article 12, and it would now be time for question and answer of the proponent, if anyone has any questions of the capital budget.
Jerry Lowe, Precinct 9. On this, we're voting for 3 million something or other for the capital budget. I'm confused about, is that added on to the budget that we already approved the other day, or is that just, we have to approve these, approve these besides even though they're already in that budget?
The capital budget is not part of the operating budget. It is a separate budget that is funded by borrowing, and then you pay off the debt service.
Okay, so that's added to the operating budget. We already, we are-
The debt service is added over the course of time.
The other thing I have, so there's many, many different things on the capital budget, so I'm just curious, on the contracting end, once we decide that there's a need, say, on something that's pretty big, like, I don't know, there was one for $700,000, I think, high school restroom renovation, $815,000. So is that, how do we come up with that price, first of all?
To date, in the town of Chelmsford, we've done one elementary school and two middle schools bathroom renovations. So between our experience with that and using figures that come to us, we've done a chart out per bathroom, and that's how we came up with that number with a small contingency.
Okay, and then you bid that out?
Yes, we do. We have to bid it out.
As a fixed-price contract?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have fixed-price contracts.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be like any contract we do, it'll have a price to it, and the contingency is far unforeseen. I mean, you can't look in every wallet, they're gonna rip apart.
No, I understand. So on the contracting part, who, who writes up the contract and who is it reviewed by?
Well, first of all, we end up with a architect, you need a electrical, and you need a plumbing engineer, okay, to help you with that, the back end of it, and then we usually do the front end, and then it's reviewed by the town, and then it's sent to town council, and then it's sent out to bid.
Okay, did the selectmen review the contracts?
Not usually, no.
Okay. I'm just curious, because it seemed like the contract that we made for the grinder pumps had issues.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, I got it.
The grinder pump is a totally different situation.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions regarding the capital budget? Do we have any more questions regarding the capital budget?
Paul Regazio, Precinct 7. Can someone tell me what the, I realize this $3 million doesn't impact the current year's tax rate, but what would be the annual cost on the debt, on the debt side in the year, let's say, the year 2017? So, that's really what we're, we're approving here.
It varies by year because all of these different capital items that we've looked at have different terms that we're going to borrow the money over. Most of the items, the vehicles and equipment are going to be five years. So, theoretically, you could take that, divide by five, and add interest to get, to get to the answer.
So, we're talking $500,000, $600,000 a year, say, 2017?
Assuming that everything was borrowed over five years, which realistically, some things like, especially the high school restrooms, will definitely be more than five years. I would suggest 10 years.
So, we're talking $300,000 to $500,000 rough per year?
Right. I mean, the other thing is, this, each year in the budget, you'll see, and if you look in the debt service budget, we're paying off principal each year. So, you have to think of, we're paying off older bonds. This will be added on in the future, but we also have older bonds that we're retiring.
But this is, this is increased spending. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. In the same line of questions, could you, could you tell us, how much is the debt service for 2016 without this addition, and how much will it be with this addition?
If you look on page 63 of the budget, it's under non-excluded debt. It's almost down near the bottom. We're basically, you would be looking at for the whole, for the whole capital plan. Right now, we're carrying a figure of $119,000 because you have to figure, when we, when we, when we issue the bonds, we won't be paying, we'll be paying interest in the beginning, and then we'll start paying principal the following year. So, we're carrying a figure of $119,000. We don't actually know the actual interest until we actually sell the bonds. Fortunately, we're still in a low-interest rate environment, so...
So, that's our existing debts is $119,000?
No, that's, that's to fund this capital. If you were to, now, if you look on page 63, in the last column, it says the figure at the bottom for non-excluded debt, which is principal and interest, is $7,066,170. If we, if none of the capital plan was funded that's on the screen, you would subtract $119,000 off of that.
So, that's an increase in our, our annual debt load of percentage?
Well, we have...
About 3%?
We have, but we have, we also have older bonds that are being retired. So, if you look, if you look at the column on the right next to that, it shows that we have a change of $4,000 because we are increasing. We're, we're doing a new borrowing to fund this capital plan, but older ones are being retired. So, I don't want to give town meeting the impression that our debt service budget for non-excluded debt is going up $119,000. It's actually going up just $4,000 because a lot of the increase is being offset by paying down older bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the proponent? There being none, does the finance committee have a recommendation on the capital budget?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted a majority to accept this article.
Does the board of selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the board of selectmen recommended 3-2 not to approve the capital budget, and it helps save time, Mr. Chase, was to reduce the budget by some amount. You can still ask us, though.
Does the school committee have a recommendation?
School committee supports the capital budget.
Okay. There being nothing further, we will now vote on, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? There being none, we will now vote on Article 12, the capital budget. A yes vote is to approve the capital budget as presented, and no vote is to reject it.
Kind of lost in all of this discussion, Mrs. Kelly B. for Chelmsford Telemedia, is the fact that there is a capital planning committee that takes a hard look at the needs of the town. Invariably, there are more capital planning items requested than we have money to spend for. So, the fact that there is a $3.3 million capital budget being put forward doesn't mean that that's everything on the list of needs. Looks like it's going to pass handily. This will certainly be the end for the evening.
Final vote is 108 to support the capital budget, 17 opposed, one abstention. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to reconvene...
Yeah, I was making...
To reconvene Monday at 7:30. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
This is Kelly B. for Chelmsford Telemedia. This concludes the second night of what's going to be a three-night town meeting. And as you just heard, we'll be reconvening on Monday night at 7:30. Although we have gotten through only 12 of the 22 warrant articles, the remaining 10 are reasonably straightforward. I anticipate that we're going to have some issue with Article 19, which is to lease the property that used to be the Swain Road landfill for a solar energy farm. That's come up before, and it was tabled to get more information on it. One of the overarching themes here, I think you saw tonight, is an increased willingness on the part of the town meeting reps and actually some of the selectmen to challenge the status quo, to challenge the budget that's been put forward by town manager Paul Cohen. It is, it is clearly the case that three of the selectmen now, Bob Joyce, Laura Merrill, and Jenna Askenberg, are in, of, of the same mindset, which is to try to find ways to save the town money, to save the taxpayers' money. And that means that they are going to look for ways, as Bob Joyce did with his, his proposed amendments this evening, to save money and kick money back to the taxpayers. You've, you heard, if you were listening carefully, at least a couple of times, the board of selectmen voting 3 to 2 against a recommended warrant article. So, I think you're going to see more of that, both here on the town meeting floor and in the years to come, and especially at the board of selectmen meeting. So, that's sort of the dynamic as it exists today. And also, as you see here on the town meeting floor, we have a whole bunch of new town meeting reps. They're obviously getting a trial by fire here. I'm actually kind of surprised that the, although I anticipated the grinder pump issue taking a lot of time, it did, but then the second part passed quickly. I am very, very surprised that the capital budget took up the remainder of the time for this evening, and we only barely got it in, and now we're adjourned until Monday night. So, with our fingers crossed that Monday night will get a little bit, will go a little bit more smoothly. I want to thank you for joining us. We'll see you on Monday night. Thanks for all of our volunteers here at Chelmsford Telemedia. Good night.